16 Gorham Pond Road. I just want to say, I have sung at this new arena in front of 10,000 people and had no stage fright, sitting in front of you guys, it's like.
No, don't be nervous.
So, a tax cap is not some new novel idea. There are many towns in New Hampshire that have adopted, adopted tax caps for their town and school districts. Neighboring Massachusetts has a blanket 2.5% property tax cap for the entire state. It's not a new concept. A tax cap is not a way for residents to inflict punishment upon the school and the town. It's not going to hinder the growth and prosperity of our town. It does not mean that budgets will be unable to keep pace with inflation. And it does not mean that the school or town cannot invest in our community. It does not mean there are no room for extenuating circumstances. I've spoken with many community members who are frustrated, who feel the squeeze of 7% inflation the past few years, but also whose wages have not risen along with it, who've seen their property taxes go up year over year. Every single household in our community has taken a look at their budgets and they've had to adjust accordingly. The large bulk of how this town is funded is through its residents. So a tax cap is a way to put some decision-making process back into the hands of those who write the checks. We will use this year's current suggested budget as the example. The 2.5% tax cap for the district would mean that you can submit a budget up to $1,375,000 more than this year's $55 million budget without coming to the taxpayers. I've seen on social media the notion that I don't wish to see the community grow and prosper. On the contrary, I would love to see certain things happen, like for instance, somebody finally finds a way to add a cafeteria to Glen Lake School so our community would finally be able to have full day kindergarten. Or argument sake, in the event of unexpected surprises, like this year's 14% increase in the health insurance costs, which I think even all of you were just a surprise of the taxpayers. By all means, come up with these amazing ideas, plans, and ways to grow and make our community even better. Come to us with the unexpected. All a tax cap is saying is we ask that you come to the people who pay for this community, for the people whose hard-earned money pays for the services, the schools, the roads, the salaries, the collective bargaining agreements. All it's saying is let's come together to make these decisions. The 2.5% was not created out of thin air. The number was arrived at by researching what other towns with a tax cap use, along with the Consumer Price Index. It's a number that would allow what needs to be paid for, what needs to be handled first before we move on to the wants. People are starting to be priced out of this community, and I'm aware that this is a problem not unique to Goffstown. It's happening all over our state. But instead of playing the blame-the-state game, or saying, well, that's how it is everywhere, and doing nothing about the problem, let's come together as a school board and a community and set the example for others in our state. Why not be proactive instead of reactive? I ask that you take a look at what's being said amongst the community and recommend the tax cap. Show our community you hear them, show them you get it, and show that you want to work together to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Go ahead, Dan.
You mentioned that there might be about 1.5 million more than the 55 million that we have submitted, or the Budget Committee has submitted to us. Do you have the methodology you used to make that calculation?
It's 2.5% of the previous year's budget.
Actually, it's not.
That's what it should be.
I know it's should be, but the law's calculation in RSA 32:5B or C is a little more complex than that. So if it happened to be, let's say, a million dollars less than what the Budget Committee proposed, where would your stance be?
I don't know that I necessarily understand. You mean if your budget came in a million less?
No, no, if I'm saying if the 2.5% tax cap would calculate to we could raise no more than 54 million.
Okay.
Although the Budget Committee went 55 million, where would you be with that? Would that 2.5% be adequate? Or are you saying that percentage should be a little higher?
I'm saying at that point, you come to the taxpayers.
How?
It comes up for a vote. It would end up via a special election, or that year in the election, like when we come to vote on the budget, it would be like an amendment where you would say, we as the school board, you know, are requesting above the 2.5% to cover the cost of Glen Lake cafeteria. So it allows the taxpayers the opportunity to decide if this is the year we want to pay for it, or they can come back at a deliberative session and say, can it be done in two phases? Can it be done? So it's a way for the taxpayers to come back and say, okay, we hear you, this is what you need, but we can't give you that much right now. How can we make this work for everybody?
If there was something specific that we could point to, but if there isn't anything specific we can point to, health insurance at 14%, bargaining agreements at the rate that the taxpayers have already approved in prior years pushes us over.
But that's where you come to the taxpayers and you say, hey, we can't control.
But the taxpayers already said yes.
We can't control what the union is saying we have to pay for health insurance.
Okay.
And the taxpayers are going to have to say, that's one of those things we can't get around. It's something we have to approve.
Interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for Shannon, right? Jerry?
Just as a question, as I look at this wording, this is just saying that the authoritative, or this committee and the Budget Committee couldn't propose and recommend this budget. But they could always, based on this wording, they could always propose a higher number, just not recommend it to the voters, so they could vote on it?
That's a good question.
So this is just limiting us to what we can recommend to the voters, but we can still come up with a higher number and put that on the warrant article, but we couldn't vote to recommend it. We'd have to vote to not recommend that higher number to the voters to then vote for it.
You could, at a deliberative session, say, we want to amend this to 4% or whatever. And it would change the warrant article that way if at the deliberative session.
No, if, I'm sorry, if I may follow.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
If this was approved into law, and this was an ordinance that we had to follow, or a law we had to follow, this is just saying that we couldn't vote to recommend a budget that is higher than 2.5%.
To my knowledge, yes.
But we could still put a number on the warrant article that's at 3.5%, just vote not to recommend it to the taxpayers. So it would still be a higher number showing up on the warrant article to actually.
If I understand the RSA correctly, then yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry. Any one? Go ahead, Ellen.
If I'm understanding what I've read about it.
Brian, do you want to come up?
Yeah, I want to speak tonight. This is, I'm not.
Have a seat.
Is this live?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it should be. So state your name and address.
Brian Mazer, 39 Shirley Park Road. I'm going to present on my behalf.
Yep.
Yeah, my understanding of the RSA is that it's really controls or restrictions around what the governing body could present as a budget. I think what Jerry was mentioning, I think it's something in regards to a petition warrant article. I don't think it gives you the liberty to propose two separate budgets. That's my understanding with the statutory language, but it just, it's what you're able to present to the town and the Budget Committee.
Are you good?
It's a response.
Okay.
I think there's some further knowledge, you know, as a statement, I think there's some further knowledge that we would have to understand from lawyers and legalese if this was approved and what could be done.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Ellen, go ahead.
Just, this is not new to any governing body in Goffstown. We've had these before come forward years past. Given what I've heard, the public already has significant input at every meeting. School or town side when it comes to budgets, we have public hearings, the public's there, public can amend the proposed, presented budgets at those times, and the public votes on each budget. Why do we need a tax cap? It doesn't make sense to me when the public has full input and full authority in the voting process that we undertake here in Goffstown, many towns in New Hampshire. There are many things that, as was mentioned, that drive a budget. And I doubt on the town side either, but there's certainly nothing in there, in my opinion, that's fluff and we're just going to throw it out there because we want to take money. We've got the contracts, we've got insurances, we've got all these things that are fixed, put upon us, state requirements. That pretty much runs our budget and controls what we're able to do. To put another layer of, oh, you can only go 2.5% on the tax impact, strikes me as being unnecessary because of all the input we get from public and the opportunities the public has to vote several times before we get to the march vote. So I would suggest, while I can appreciate people wanting to make sure things aren't going to go up more than they need to, I'd suggest there's already ample opportunities for the public to participate, get elected to boards themselves, do a lot of the homework and the research, and come to the public meetings and deliberative sessions and vote it, make their motions and vote at that time, instead of putting a blanket on every year, year after year for us. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Ellen. Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure if anybody else from on the petitioner's side wanted to add anything more. I did prepare some comments for tonight that I think just will address some of what your questions were. I did speak to our school district council about the petition article and, you know, read through the statutes myself, so if there's no one else, I can kind of cover, you know.
Yeah, is there, was there anything you want to add? Oh, go ahead, Jenny.
I just had a couple of things, and that is, it seems like some of the things that you're talking about, like our contracts, they've already been voted on by the voters. Can you go to the voters again and have them say, no, we don't want to pay them now because it's over the tax cap? If it's already been voted yes by voters, you can't change that vote in another vote, can you?
No. I'll adjourn.
Go ahead, Scott.
I have some of these things that I think I might answer questions that you may have.
The other thing I wanted to say, just an FYI, kindergarten doesn't just depend upon a cafeteria?
No, I just knew that was one of the reasons why, like, we can't do full.
A million dollars isn't going to cut it.
Yeah, no.
It's got to be a lot.
No, I'm aware, that's what I'm saying, like, situations like that, where it's like, I know everybody in the district would love that, and I don't think I know a single parent, like, I don't have kids in kindergarten, I'm not going to have any kids in kindergarten, but I remember what it was like, and I would fully support something like that. So I was using it as an example of situations that come up where there's no way that a 2.5% is going to cover big projects like that. It's just not. And that's why it gives you the opportunity to come back and say, as a community, is this what we want? If this is what you really want, then you have to realize your taxes are going to go up. And it gives them the opportunity.
You can also do that with a warrant article without having a tax cap, so.
And I look at a tax cap more as a safety net, because as much as it would be nice to have more people coming and having engagement with you guys and giving input, people, I'm not even going to the million reasons why people don't come to these meetings, but they don't, and there is the mindset that if you don't come, then you don't have a right to complain, and I understand that, and that's why I've been coming, and that's why I'm stepping up to it. But for some people, they don't have the ability to be here. They don't have the ability to take the time to run on a board, and for them, they look at it as a safety net to know that, okay, I can't be there, I can't be as engaged as I want, but my dollars are protected. That's how a lot of people view it.
Are you good, Jenny?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Scott.
All right. So I think I'm going to be able to respond to some of the inquiries that came about. So just a couple of things. This petition warrant article was received and it was verified by the supervisors of the checklist to make sure that all of the signatures were registered voters, and it complied. There's a similar warrant article on the town side, and due to the law, we have to hold these hearings a number of days before deliberative session. So people were wondering, why are we holding a public hearing tonight and the town's doing it at the same time? Well, both boards had their meetings tonight, and we have statutory reasons why we have to do it now. And that's why we could not orchestrate a, you know, different days and things like that. So I just wanted, it was kind of unavoidable. So the wording of the petition warrant article, there are two paragraphs to the warrant article. The second paragraph is really the technical wording from the statute, and that's truly what would belong on the actual warrant. So I spoke to our school district council about this. He's going to get me an opinion letter hopefully this week with respect to that. I did note, and I do want the petitioners to note that when you do these things, I think the law and the courts are fairly understanding that folks don't, they're not like administration here, or some of you are more experts in how this stuff is worded. So there was a couple of like minor things that should be changed. So for one, and I noticed this, it says the town of Goffstown on a school district warrant, it should say the Goffstown School District or the School District. And then the same thing, the RSA that was quoted was 197-D, that doesn't apply here. It would be RSA 32:5-B or C.
That was derecord.
And that's okay. No, that's totally cool.
Yeah.
It doesn't, like, it's not, we know the intent.
Yeah.
And that's really the key here. The wording of it, the intent is pure, it's understandable. So again, my opinion, that of our attorney concurred, that should there be modifications at a deliberative session to clarify it? Yeah, but it still belongs on the ballot, I think, all right? So one of the questions was, you know, what can go on, what can be presented? And, you know, again, this is my opinion, that of our attorney, is what can be presented is that tax cap amount and no more. So Mr. Mazer, whoever advice you got, that is accurate. You can't, you can't put forward a budget that exceeds that 2.5% cap. And the semantics of, well, it could be higher, but it's not recommended now, you can't put it on. And the reason being is that when we notice or we warn the community as to what is going on the ballot, it has to comply with state law, it has to pass Department of Revenue Administration muster, and there are forms that have to be filled out, which I have to do tonight at this meeting. So the answer to that is it cannot exceed that amount, no matter what. And it is the Budget Committee's budget, not technically the school board. The school board can have an alternative budget, but it's the Budget Committee's budget that goes to that deliberative session. As the petitioner mentioned, when this goes on the ballot and it's going on the warrant at the deliberative session, the same exercise is going to happen whereby the petitioner will speak, members of the school board can speak as well, or myself. The language of the warrant article cannot be amended because it's statutory in nature. The percentage could be, if anyone was so inclined, up or down, okay? But you can't change the wording, you can't, you can't have people make this null and void, like, about five or six years ago, there were some changes or amendments in warrant articles to C, and then struck all language, that is illegal, you can't do that anymore. So the, if someone wanted to amend it from 2.5% up or down, that is allowable if it is, if it passes at the deliberative session. So a couple of things for clarification. I provided the school board with RSA 32: B and C. This is the proposed tax cap language and also the process. So you'll note, and it was on the petition itself, this requires a three-fifths majority vote. So it's a 60% threshold, which is greater typically than a typical 50% threshold, so just be mindful of that. As Mr. Cludier alluded to, the language in the statute, it's a, the proposal is a 2.5% tax cap. However, the statute also reads that you're supposed to add back any unassigned fund balances that are used to offset taxes. You add that back. So that's important because we have return fund balance to offset taxes for the last, you know, big amounts for the last three years due to COVID. That amount last year was about $2.6 million. It gets added back to that localized tax effort, which, again, my calculations are, it was a $1,076,000 impact. I'm going to go over that in a second. One important caveat is that this does not impact the default budget, all right? So the school board has the authority to set the default budget. So as you had mentioned, Jenny, you talked about contracts, right? Well, contracts that, anything that was approved by the voters in prior years for, whether it's, say, it's a teacher's contract or support staff contract, let's say that there were increases in special ed, like we saw this year, all of those become part of the default. However, that default number does not change on the ballot. That's something that the board sets. But the proposed budget would almost undoubtedly be lower based upon that cap, okay? And we have had that, every once in a blue moon, you'll have a budget that's lower than the default, but with a tax cap, it's much more likely that your proposed budget would be lower than the default, and I'll explain that a little bit later. Tax caps are in New Hampshire. They are predominantly in communities that have cities or communities that have town councils. In those, in cities, Manchester is a good example, they have a mayor and Board of Alderman. The citizens, and this is what Ellen was alluding to, the citizens don't vote on the school budget in Manchester. The Alderman vote on the school budget in Manchester. Same thing with a community, let's say Dover, New Hampshire, they have a tax cap as well, but their town council or their, those are the folks that approve the budgets, they also will deal with bond issues for school renovations. It does not go to the voters, a lot of times by their charter. So that's really the key difference. The, so here's where, again, Ellen alluded to some of it, I wanted to be, to clarify this, is that in Goffstown, the voters on both the town and the school side, they work with the Budget Committee to develop the budget. So it's technically, we are SB2, Senate Bill 2 Town, which means that the Budget Committee is the one that sets the budget. But keep in mind that the voters of Goffstown, they elect you folks, the school board, they also elect the Budget Committee, and together, those two parties are the ones that develop it and recommend the budget. And that is really, not to give too much of a civics lesson, but that's representative democracy. The voters, that's one aspect of it, where the voters are electing you folks and the Budget Committee to have that checks and balances going on. The Budget Committee and the school board, they hold hearings, they have budget presentations, and so the input of the community is sought. Not that everybody comes to these meetings or gives their input, but it's part of the statute where you have to do that. You have to listen to voters, understand what's on their minds to see, is this budget, you know? And we just had a budget hearing last, you know, last week for that matter. In addition to that Budget Committee process where an independent, you know, another entity is really scrutinizing the budget, asking questions on behalf of the community, when you go to that deliberative session, that's where the voters are given yet another presentation by, in this case, it would be the school board as to, okay, here is the budget that the Budget Committee has put forward. There's give and take, there's amendments that can be made. Ultimately, at that deliberative session, that budget can be voted up, increased, decreased, stay the same. But that's another opportunity for the voters or the citizens to exercise, you know, their rights in terms of what that budget should be. And then lastly, once that is set, then voters have another bite at the apple where they go and they vote in March. And so they can then vote on that budget that was then passed forward through the deliberative session, or they can vote for the default. So there's two, they always have those two choices there. So as Ellen was alluding to, there are multiple steps where voters, you know, have their opportunity. The, so what are the implications of the tax cap article? I believe that the petitioner, petitioners were pretty articulate in what's contained in the language and the rationale for that percentage. I will say that as someone who is responsible for helping you develop your budget and helping the Budget Committee, it's really very challenging, to say the least. So state revenues are very unpredictable. As I mentioned to this board, and I'll mention it to the community, special education funding is supposed to be paid back, you know, to the local communities, but they don't return, they don't, they don't fund their fair share of that. When the state doesn't fund that fair share, and it's not to, you know, this, I heard what you said about the state blame-the-state game, but you have to, I'll apologize in advance, I'm going to have to blame the state a little bit here. So, but we don't.
I too will blame the state, and I don't apologize.
All right. So with that, you know, I really want to put some things in context, you know? So if they say that they're going to fund, you know, a very, very expensive out-of-district placement, and then they only fund it at 70%, well, that means that all of us have to pay it. And for me, give me 30 seconds to editorialize, we're pitting neighbor against neighbor here on the local tax side because the state really kind of has not really fulfilled their obligations. What many people don't know, and I'll remind you, was that several years ago, the state contributed 35% towards retirement costs for the folks who are eligible for retirement. Well, our retirement cost right now for Goffstown School District is $1.5 million, all right? The state previously paid 35% of that. So, you know, if you do the math, and again, I have, on a house that is assessed at $400,000, that's 55 cents in the tax rate, that's $220 that you, the taxpayer, are paying on that $400,000 house because the state shifted that cost to the locals. So the other thing that I wanted to share with you, and again, indulge me just to editorialize for a second, but these are my tax bills for the last 26 years. Okay, yes, I'm a nerd. Yes, I put them in a spreadsheet, okay? And what I did, and I want to illustrate this, so in the year 2000, the statewide property tax was instituted as a means of the state fulfilling its constitutional responsibility. In the state constitution, it requires the state to fund education. That's, we heard, whole adequate education. So in the year 2000, the total portion of my local tax, of my tax bill that went to schools was $2,400, of which $956 was from the statewide property tax, and $1,453 was my local tax, you know, that we're talking about tonight, the whole tax cap, right? At that time, in the year 2000, again, almost $1,000 the state was paying towards it, they were paying 40% of the taxes that are needed for education. Locals were paying 60. Anybody want to venture to say what it is now? Anybody in the community want to guess? It's almost, it's 90/10 practically, okay? So, and this is, to me, this is the craziest part, because when I did this, the state paid $1,035 in the year 2001, that was the statewide property tax that I paid on my tax bill. Last year, this year, it was $651, 31% decrease over 23 or 26 years. I mean, that's crazy, you know, to think about that. So I share with you that, you know, no, I guess I don't want to, you know, get into the whole thing of like hitting the state, et cetera, but the reality of it is, is that the numbers speak for themselves. I didn't do any additions to my house, and the state is giving us a whole lot less money, and then now what it's doing is it's putting, it's forcing some people out of their homes where they can't live here, they're on fixed incomes. It's not right. I'm with you. But the tax cap is a way to solve a problem, but this is the problem, folks. I hate to tell you, but this is the problem. The other thing I will share with you, that budgets and costs are not steady and predictable. So not everything follows this 2.5%. There are years, we had a couple of years over the last two, because of all of the federal monies that we got, where our, your tax bills. monies that we got, where our, where your tax bills were level. They weren't even an issue. We returned, and one year went down a couple of years ago. My point is that budgets and expenses are kind of all over the place, and when you're stuck on a 2.5% cap, it can be very challenging when you, in a period of, say, high inflation, which is what we're experiencing now. So my calculations are that we would have to, if this tax bill were in place, I'm sorry, if the tax cap was in place, when you add back, that's where I think we're off a little bit, because I added back that the monies that, the fund balance, it was about a $1.3 million that would have to be decreased in our budget to comply with that. I did not go backwards or forwards because I just wanted to focus in on what was approved by the budget committee and the school board this year. I didn't want to speculate what it might look like in years out. The one thing that I don't have to speculate about is that unassigned fund balance money, that's going to be less than, that is used to offset the tax rate for the following year, that will be less and less because of COVID. We returned a lot more than what we thought we were, simply because programs didn't occur, busing was one where we didn't run all the buses, et cetera. So that offset will, with the add back, will not be as high. To what extent? I can't tell you, I'm not going to guess, but it won't be as high. So let's take a look at the 1.1, and I think some of you alluded to it. Just for perspective, many people mentioned it, petitioner and the board, our health insurance at 14%, that was over $1 million alone. Our teacher and staff raises, that also accounted for, and these are the ones that the voters approved, $1 million alone. Our special education, our mandatory special ed spending, these are out-of-district placements, we have one that's going to cost us, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, just the special ed placements and the special ed transportation charges, well over $1 million. In perspective, I want to also chat a little bit about the Consumer Price Index and Social Security increases over the last few years. And what you'll see here is that Social Security cost of living has increased 21% over the last four years, and the numbers specifically were 5.9% in 2021, 8.7% increase in Social Security benefits in 2022, 3.2 in 2023, and 3.2 in 2024. It averages out to about a 5% over that four-year period. It also illustrates that sometimes things are low and sometimes things spike. And then the COLA for the Northeast Region, pretty similar, 14.3% over the last three years, almost a 5% there as well. I don't know what that number is. I don't know if the right number is 2.5, whether it's five, whether it's four, I don't know. But I will share with you that these are pretty unpredictable in terms of some of how our expenses are going. I also wanted to share with the board and the community that the law is pretty specific. I highlighted, you know, the law. There are state forms that point me to, I highlighted them, yep, I got to use this number for the local education effort. Then I have to use another number from another state form. So it's, it's not like it's difficult for me to come up with, you know, with the number. I just basically look at our, our local forms that the town and the school both fill out. And then the same thing, you know, the amount of money that is used to offset or reduce taxes, that's also on our state forms. So it's kind of all there. There's no secret, it's very, very transparent for anybody in the community to see. All these forms, they get posted, you know, with our budget forms. So it's not like I come up with this stuff or the board comes up with it. And lastly, like, so I did, I do try to project revenues and all the other, and what our tax effort is going to be. I try to be as conservative as I can because I don't, you know, especially when it comes to like predicting a tax rate, which I despise doing, by the way, because I'm not, I don't set the tax rates the DRA does, but I have to try to give estimates. But I believe that if we apply the tax cap this year, it'd be about $1,076,000. And I should let the board know and the community that this is, I talked to the town as well. So I talked to our town administrator or our assistant town administrator to make sure that we're reading the statute right. This petition was filed both on the town and the school side, so we want to make sure that the town of Goffstown and the Goffstown School District are in sync in terms of how we're interpreting, you know, the statute, and also spoke with our attorney. So with that, I just wanted to inform you that as to what my interpretations of things were, it's pretty much here, it's on the forms, there's not a whole lot of magic, you know, to this. It's really a matter of the board's discretion, the community's discretion as to whether or not they think this is a good thing or not.
All right. Thank you, Scott. I saw Dan and Ellen's hand up. Go ahead, Dan.
So I just need to make it clear that my first question was, how did you come up with the 2.5 and how Scott comes up with the 2.5? It's not the total proposed budget times 2.5% of last year to see what the difference is. It's the amount raised by local taxation, which is significantly lower, multiplied by 2.5%. And instead of having wiggle room of the ability for this year, had it been in place, to have like $1.5 million more, it's actually close to $1.1 million less. It's because of that maximum number. It's not the total, it's a number that's a lot less. I think that needs to be clear because that is what bothers me more than anything else about having a percentage here. But yes, we agree that the statute says if at deliberative session, this were in place, the proposal cannot violate the, a 2.5%, but the deliberative session can do whatever they want, but they can't go over 10.
10%.
Yeah. Because that, that's a normal maximum. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Go ahead, Ellen.
Should something like this, at whatever percent, pass? And Scott just listed a bunch of things we have no control over, what the cost of special ed, which we've seen in past years, I think one year, not too long ago, went up huge amount, just because we had people moving in and the children needed outside services and that. We've got state changes in the revenue that they send us or the Fed send us, we get the insurance, someone just said 14% increase on that. There are things that, many things in the school district and town budget, we have no control over. What happens when those things together are more than the percent passed by for the increase?
You would have to make difficult decisions as a board. And when I say difficult decisions, there is no way that we're going to be able to cut $1.1 million on school supplies or on equipment alone, right? So I say that not in the respect, Ellen, that our biggest ability to reduce a number is in the area of staffing. So if you have a teacher, for an example, the average teacher with benefits, retirement, so let's say it's $90, $100,000, that is impacted, you'd have to, like, we don't have enough money, you couldn't do that with supply.
And that's what I was kind of hoping you'd explain to all of us.
I don't know what that, that would be something that myself, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, we would, HR, we would, you know, work with you on what that might look like. But we also are, I think it was last week where the superintendent, we're the fourth lowest cost per pupil in the state out of 163 school districts. So I think that signifies that we're spending our money judiciously. That being the case, you would have, it would have to be in the form of some staffing, you know, combination, support staff, administrators, teachers. You're going to have to do something on the staffing side to hit these targets, and that's only year one. I will share with you that in places that have these tax caps- As the petitioner said, in a city like Manchester, the aldermen, a certain number of aldermen can override a tax cap, same thing, and I gave the example of Dover where, you know, there are folk, a certain number of them can override it, okay? But here, the only way it gets overridden is at the deliberative session. So that's where folks would have to, you know, if it were in place and it wasn't enough, you would then have to convince those at a deliberative session that, hey, we need a bigger, we need a higher budget amount. Or we'd have to cut this, you know?
There's not much to cut, other than the programs and the staffing. We know that. Okay.
All right. Is there, Wendy, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more discussion on this petition article before I open up to public comment? Okay. Can I have the board, please?
So is this for a public comment on the hearing itself?
On the hearing only.
Hi.
Yeah.
I thought I had to sign that to speak when I first spoke, so you'll have to-
I don't have to call you again? Okay. And this will be a little different because it's a hearing. If people have questions, we can ask Shannon to come back up to try to answer them. The board or Scott can also try to answer them. So the first one is Adam. Hi, Adam.
Hi, everyone. Adam Barrier, 22nd half here in Goffstown. So I just wanted to speak to the warrant article. Scott kind of spoke to most of my points, though I didn't bring a spreadsheet of all my taxes across time. But I'm just concerned that the tax cap puts an unnecessary hamper, hindrance on what your school board budgets look like. I am a high school administrator. Part of my job every year is to work on preparing the budget for my school, and I know that a cap of, an arbitrary cap, or what seems arbitrary, really could, would cause a lot of difficulties. We know budgets move up and down, we know some of those costs move up and down. To be stuck at that 2.5% concerns me that we wouldn't be able to do what we need to do, that we would end up in a situation where our default budget is higher than our proposed budget. And as Scott just said and Ellen spoke to, we'd be faced, you would be faced with this task of trying to cut money, which would have to become from cutting programming or cutting positions. And I, I don't think that's what we want to do here in Goffstown. I think we are, we know we spend very little per pupil compared to, you know, our, the rest of the towns in the state, and I think putting that cap on it's really going to cause potential harm somewhere down the road in one of those places. My other point was kind of what Ellen spoke to. We as constituents have a variety of opportunities to voice our concerns. We're doing it here now. There's public comment throughout, at every school board meeting, we can come and say whatever we want about the budget as we're talking about it, and then we have deliberative sessions, and ultimately, we have the power to vote on the budget. So if you propose a budget that we as a town don't like, we don't have to vote for it. So we have those opportunities. So I just wanted to speak to that in terms of the tax cap. So thank you.
Thank you, Adam. All right. The next is Diane.
Actually, I'm okay not speaking.
Okay.
I understood that we signed into the meeting.
Oh, okay. Joseph, are you the same? Okay. All right. No, that's fine. Lauren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board, thanks for letting me speak. I'll be brief. Lauren Dukas, 23 Ginger Drive. I just wanted to come and hear the explanations. I appreciate all the research done. I went to hear the explanations from the petitioners. I would ask as a member of the community, this school board does not recommend this tax cap. I do not see it as a safety net. I see it as a binder for the community. It's going to be very restrictive to all the points that Scott had brought up where our costs are not fluid. I speak only on my own capacity as a private citizen, but I am a member of Goffstown's Budget Committee. Even in the last three years, we've seen the immense amount of fluctuations, and a 2.5% static cap is going to be a real disservice to really all of our students, and that's unpalatable. I would also just like to add that in years past, tax caps have been struck down in some instances as unconstitutional by our state Supreme Court, as they do remove our local authority. We do have an elected budget committee. We do go through this process with the board, with the town, with all the budgets being presented. So I feel that this would actually decrease transparency as it would muddy our processes as they are quite a bit. As Scott was saying, you could amend things in the deliberative session, we could ask for the tax cap to be overridden, but then we've already went through all the budget lines on a 76-page document. Then if we increase it at a deliberative session, where's the oversight for the public? The public won't be able to see where that money was really needed. So really, I feel like a tax cap would make it more difficult for the public to see everything that has to be spent on a line item basis. So I would just ask the school board to not recommend this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. All right. So I don't have any more people on the list for public comment. Is there anyone else that didn't get to sign that would like to speak on the public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, then I will close public comment.
Oh.
Sorry. Oh. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Just state your name and address, please. Hi.
Thank you for letting me speak-
Oh, no problem.
-after the time was called.
That's okay.
My name is Peter Gregor Akakis. I live at 112 Gorham Pond Road in Goffstown. I'll keep my comments extremely brief. I do hope that you unanimously vote to not support this warrant article, specifically because it's not the tool for a town like Goffstown. Okay? Our administrator has already talked to us about the SB two quality of our governance. Our townspeople are already voting on our budgets every year and deliberating on that budget every year. As far as I understand, there is only one other town in all of New Hampshire that has utilized a tax cap. That's Litchfield, New Hampshire, that is a township that uses the SB two model of governance, using town meetings. It's just not the right tool for us, where we already have our residents deciding on our budgets each and every year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So if there's no one else, I'm going to close public comment. And now the board needs to recommend or not recommend. The board that has any questions, discuss.
I couldn't hear you, Heather.
We're now going to decide if we're going to recommend or not recommend this warrant So if somebody wants to make a motion or discuss it? Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I think this would be a huge disservice to our students and our staff, and I would move to not recommend the warrant article.
All right. So I have a motion by Nicole to not recommend. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Seeing, yes.
No, I, I like to hear from other board members as well. I've already had little time to opine. My pocketbook says yes, my logic says no, because of several things. One, we have a multiplicity. We go through it at this level in detail. We hand it off to the budget committee, they go over it in detail. The budget committee has a public hearing where it goes not as detailed, but pretty well. We have a deliberative session. 2.5% would actually make it more difficult to get to where we want to have the open discussion because that number is where I'm having a real problem. Because we would have to actually reduce the budget by close to 1.1 million in order to get it to deliberative session. It's difficult for me to support the article the way it's currently working.
Thank you, Dan. Shane?
So I would say that I agree with much of the sentiment provided by my colleagues up here and Scott. I'm also, I don't know, one of the people, anyway, in this room who's worked for a district that was in a tax cap municipality. I've seen 140 teacher layoffs, I've seen how that impacts the students, I've seen how it impacts programming, and I've seen how class sizes rise to 30. And I think we've done a really good job in Goffstown of making sure that doesn't happen through addressing retention, through our teacher contracts and things like that. So for that reason and those reasons, I will not be voting in support of this tax cap.
Thank you, Shane. Anyone else? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Yeah, I want to thank Scott for sharing his personal information. I think, you know, this is a very complex issue, and seeing it in, you know, pretty clear line, you know, what's happening, I think, you know, understanding that people are getting squished- I think, you know, understanding that people are getting squished everywhere with the, you know, just the rising prices. But I think we're also losing sight of what's the cause of the problem. And I think that's something maybe the community ought to be having a bigger discussion around, because we're, you know, we're very proud, and as Brian said, sometimes embarrassed at how low our, you know, per pupil cost is. I think we're doing an awesome job there, but there's so many other factors. And, you know, so I will...I'm also non-support of the cap, but I understand the concerns of the community.
Thank you, Rhonda. Caroline, I saw your hand up.
So I certainly agree with my colleagues on the board. You know, this is a complex issue. These are complex times that we are living in. That is part of my concern moving forward. We see our costs increased personally, professionally. Here on the board, we see it every single year. I'm concerned about the direction sometimes of what these students are going to need as we move forward, because the needs increase every single year. And it is very significant. Scott spoke enough to it. I commend Shannon for coming up here. I like a lot of the things that you said, the points that you brought up. I think we are leading by example, because we are operating on a lean budget to begin with, you know, and providing a very good product in return. So I think that there's something to be said for that. I...this is not something where you're constantly...we should not be pointing fingers every single time. But it's becoming more clear that the state needs to pick up the slack, and I think people are finally starting to hear that. We have people going around doing presentations to help individuals and help communities understand how public education is funded. And part of us understanding that is because we are spending more as citizens every single day, and our salaries are not catching up with cost of living. I feel that in my own household. But I do not agree with cutting at the school's budget. Brian has said it before. This is our greatest investment in this community, and I agree with that. Whether or not I've had children in the district, I do agree with that.
Thank you, Caroline. Is there anyone else? Go ahead, Scott.
I just don't want to be accused of hammering the state so much. But last year, you'll recall, I was very excited, because there was a House budget that was going to be over $1 million more in adequacy, which then did not pass in the Senate, and then was agreed upon when both parties came under their, you know, their, whatever they call it, reconciliation, whatever the term is. But there was $1 million that the House voted for that failed to pass. The Senate got their way. That being the case, that $1 million is like 35, 40 cents in the tax rate. That's like 175 bucks for, you know, that people didn't have in their pockets, because the Senate went the other way and the House agreed to it. So that's only one little piece. I just don't want to be accused of...because I know that I had conversations with some of our reps about that. It was very appreciative. It ultimately didn't pass. I got excited for no reason. But there's a lot of other ways in which we can improve. And I, as...when we...when the petitioner mentioned Massachusetts, like Massachusetts, like, their state funds a lot towards local education, far more than we do. And then, on just on facilities alone, they pay way more. We can't even get a penny out of the state to put our...for our buildings. I mean, there's $50 million, $40 million in there, over two years, for every school district in the state, for building construction. That's preposterous. You can't build one elementary school for that price. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Scott.
So I said, nobody yells at me tomorrow.
So we have a motion. We have a second. We've had a lot of discussion. So I'm going to call a vote. So the motion is to not recommend this petition warrant article. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So everybody's kind of opposed, abstaining. We are unanimous. So thank you. All right, so with that, I need an adjournment motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn for the public hearing.
Thank you. Who's second?
Ellen.
All those...all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're adjourned from the public hearing. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. We're going to start our board meeting. You're all more than welcome to stay.
Can I just say one more thing?
Oh, yes.
I'm very sorry. I should have said this. We did have one citizen who was not able to be here this evening, that she sent a letter, so I will send this around. I'm sorry. I should have done this earlier. My apologies.
All right. So I'm going to call the school board meeting to order at 7:29. All right, do we have correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
All right, commendations, good news.
Do you have anything to share? Yep. Over at Mountain View, on January 11th, they had their school-wide spelling bee. And the top three finishers for Mountain View, in third place, were Hadley Vitale, second place was Trenton Bryant, and our school winner was Lilian Wright. So congratulations to all of the students that were a part of this spelling bee.
Nice, thank you. Is that all?
That's all I have to say for the evening.
All right, thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Commendations, good news. Shane?
I have a quick commendation, kind of a strange one.
Okay.
My wife and son were involved in an automobile accident a few days ago.
Oh, no.
And it was one of those real cold mornings, and, you know, they're waiting for police and whatnot. And I don't know if it's a district employee, or someone who just delivers food, is a vendor on behalf of the district, but someone who was delivering food for the Goffstown School District pulled over on Mass Road and said, "Wow, this little guy looks cold. Does he need somewhere warm to sit?" So my wife's, you know, waiting for an ambulance, calling people, you gotta...gives this man my son. And he's sitting in the car with him, and he's like letting him hit the horn and all that. And I don't know who he was, but it shows that the people that are working in this community, in our schools, are really top-notch people. So I don't know who you are, but thank you.
Is everybody okay?
For the most part, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. All right, thank you, Shane. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, so we'll close to public comment. Is there any public comment for tonight's board meeting? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. So now, we're going to have our presentation from EMC. Scott, do you want to...or Brian, do you want to introduce? Do you guys want to come on up to the...I think there's three microphones right here?
So most of you should...hopefully, all of you have the work that was done by EMC. I see it in front of you. Now, what I'm giving you right now is a spreadsheet of basically the projects that were in...the Phase 1 project that we'll be talking about tonight. But I'd like to introduce Tom Keekins, who's the president of EMC. And I think you want to introduce your team.
Yeah, I'm Carl Eden. I'm a project developer with EMC.
I'm Joe Griffin, project developer, HPC specialist with EMC.
That's fine. They can hear you. They should be able...we can put a microphone there, too. Or someone there can drive for you. That's probably even better.
I just want to make sure GTV can hear you.
Yeah, people on TV watching can hear you.
So Tom, let me just set this up. Let me set down so people can hear the microphone. So for those of you who are more or less in the audience, GTV, and for the folks here, we've talked about our capital improvement plan, and all of the items that are on that plan. And a lot of it deals with our school infrastructure across all of our schools. I know it seems like, it was just yesterday, Ellen, but it was over 30 years ago, where Mountain View Middle School was constructed. We finished our bond payment on this high school renovation over...that was a couple of years ago, so that's been 20 years. And so we know that our buildings are aging. We know that we have invested a tremendous amount of money into our building infrastructure. And as the superintendent mentions, every year, our schools are our greatest asset in our Goffstown community. Bar none, okay? Millions upon millions of dollars is our investment here, and these are community buildings. With that, they are aging. Technologies have changed, and there is a need for the community to take a serious look at what is needed in our buildings in terms of renovations. So we reached out to EMC to do an assessment of all of our school buildings. And they...and Tom will speak to that in just a second. But we have used EMC before. EMC was part of a gym lighting retrofit. So for many of you, there were tremendous incentives at the time, where it cost us almost nothing to redo all of our lighting in our gymnasiums. EMC also did the work at New Boston Central School. So we did a complete LED conversion, lighting conversion, interior and exterior at New Boston Central School. Again, there was grants and incentives involved, and it didn't cost them, you know, but a lick. It was a very, very inexpensive project. So Tom and his team met with Brian, myself, and Randy, others, to talk about the report that you have before you. The reason why I teed it up for you over the last couple of meetings, and why you've had this report, is because we want to focus tonight on a multi-phase approach. So Tom and his team will talk a little bit about the report, but we're really going to go more hot and heavy into starting a phase approach, where the work, we hope, can start in the summer. Because we have very short windows in which we can do these types of projects in the summer is one of them. So with that, Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you, and Carl, and your team.
Awesome. Thank you. So EMC's been around for about 30 years, servicing Maine and New Hampshire. You already have some experience with us, as Scott already mentioned, with some of your...with the New Boston schools, so sort of a known entity. We've done this phased approach with dozens of school systems around you, which is where I think probably Scott talked to colleagues about the phased approach EMC's done, and the engineering work that we've done for other schools. For example, Epping is a recent one, where we started with a lighting project, did some boiler projects, and now we're designing a new ventilation system for their high school with new controls. And so we've done that same process with just numerous school systems right around you guys. So that's kind of how this whole thing, the relationship, sort of started, on the back of the fact that we did the LED projects with you guys. But since, I think, last September, it was September we started doing the audits. Two of our mechanical engineers, who had a big piece of this, are not here tonight, Eric and Adam. But so, since that time, pretty much straight, we've been going through all the schools and coming up with anything we can find, from an infrastructure, an energy improvement aspect, that would, you know, you guys should be starting to put into a capital plan. And that's essentially what that report is for you guys, is 31 million or so in improvements, which obviously not all of that is necessary at this very moment. So what your administrative team has done, and your facilities team has done, is gone through that report with us on several occasions, and said, "All right, what does this look like if we just try to focus on a first phase that really encompasses a number of things?" Number one, what can we get done, like, this summer? What could be the first phase that we could actually accomplish right away to start garnering energy savings as much as we can possibly get, and ever-source incentives? And Carl will speak on that in terms of the lighting. But we're EverSource Preferred Vendor, so we do a tremendous amount of work with EverSource. And right now, their incentives are fantastic. They change every year. So it's like a strike while the iron's hot kind of situation, where they're offering really good, all-encompassing, comprehensive incentives. And Joe can get into that, too, in terms of why we chose certain measures. But they'll literally pay up to half, 50% of things, like the building automation improvements to some of your schools. That's not guaranteed every year. Just two and a half years ago, they were vastly different than they are today, and not in a good way. So it's...that parlayed into this thing where, okay, there's $432,000 in EverSource funding in this project, $441,000. So nearly a half a million dollars in free money from EverSource for this particular project. So that obviously weighed into a Phase 1 that was pretty attractive. The energy savings, what could we do that would actually be self-funding? In other words, for the $2.9 million project, it's almost 100% paid for by energy savings alone. So all those things kind of...and also, it picks away at a lot of the things that are on your capital improvement plan that you already had. Before we began the relationship with you guys and doing our audits, you already had a capital plan, of course. And so a lot of the things that are on this Phase 1, which are in each school, almost every school gets a little bit of love in this project, of course, but a lot of these things are on that capital plan. So a project that's self-funding for a Phase 1, so you don't have to come up with any or any capital at all. Something that we could get done this first year, significant ever-source incentives, and of course, energy and operational incentives. So that's really what Phase 1 became for us. We literally looked at 112 different measures. So we looked at every single boiler room, all of the ventilation throughout the schools. As that report shows you guys, I think it's about 52 pages long, so there's a lot of reading there. But we looked at life safety, ADAC compliance, even paving and the signs out in front of the school roofs. Weatherization, meaning building envelopes, or windows, doors, ceilings. Of course, a full lighting audit. We literally have an audit of about 4,400 and some odd fixtures throughout the district that would be replaced under this project. With advanced controls, LED lights with dimming switches in every classroom, scene selection capabilities, so you can go in and just tap the button once, and it gets to the scene to whichever the teacher really likes their classroom environment to be at, based on the students, and of course, and what they're doing that particular day. So there's a lot of really cool, advanced technology from an LED perspective that would be in here. But also trying to focus on a lot of the things that are old, that are proprietary, like the building automation controls. So focusing on the fact that you've got a lot of really old Honeywell controls throughout the district, that you would love to have the capability of have the autonomy to go out to whoever you'd like to for bids, should you lose a panel. It's, you know, it's millions of dollars in controls that you have throughout this school system, and most of it's proprietary to the Honeywell platform. And a lot of it's old. So a lot of it's at least 20 years old in most places, especially places like Bartlett. So our designs are really around an open tritium Niagara-based platform that is open to any real control...any real control company that's out there, building automation company, will be able to bid on projects for you in the future, as well as service. So you're not stuck with one company for service for the next 25 years. You can kind of, every couple of years, if you think that service is not going the way that you hoped it to, this Phase 1 project gets you in a position where you start to get the ability to go out to multiple vendors for bids for service and replacement of controls. You lose one controller, and it doesn't have to be $20,000. You could say, "Thanks for the number, but we're going to get a couple more bids," because you start to build a platform that allows you to do that. I'm kind of like giving you the Cliff Notes of the 52-page report, but I think that's probably what you want.
This is probably also a good time to share. Anyone watching at home who's interested, the report is on the website.
It's online, yeah.
So if you wanted to go online, you could follow along with the report.
Yeah, and happy to answer any questions that might be confusing to someone based on the things that we're talking about. Several months of data collection, of course, and we're trying to condense it into one meeting here. So if there's anything that doesn't make sense, it's kind of clear as mud. Just Scott has our information. Brian has our information. Happy to respond to emails or have a conversation with anyone. This is what we do. Love to talk about it, but I know not everybody does, so we'll try to keep it brief. But Carl, I mean, if you want to talk about the lighting project in regards to what that encompasses from an EverSource incentive standpoint, I think that's a really big deal. It's nearly a half a million dollars in money, so it might make sense to talk about that.
Yep. So I get this fancy EverSource badge with EverSource cards. What that means is we're a preferred vendor for EverSource, so every three to four years, they put an RFP out to energy services companies to bid this program. And that means that we would provide free energy analysis. And then if the project moves forward, then we would write utility applications, and then we would provide turnkey services. So in the cases of the gymnasiums...oh, by the way, we did the auditorium last summer, too. And we talk about quality of light. If you remember what that auditorium used to be, looked like, it was very efficient, because they had little compact fluorescents in there. But we replaced that, did a new design for it, and now the lighting in there has many scenes where you can have classrooms in there, or do concerts, whatever it may be. So we talk about quality of light. That's a great example of what it used to look like, even though it was efficient. Now, the lighting is giving you different scenes. So that RFP, again, will give you turnkey services. EverSource just doesn't have the manpower to do these audits. So we give free audits to any small business customer, commercial, municipal, whatever it may be. And then we provide you a turnkey proposal, and that's in the case of, like, the gymnasiums, where we project manage. We have, I think, six project managers. We bring it...we procure the material. We bring in our own subcontractors. The contractor who did the auditorium is the same contractor who did the gymnasiums, is the same contractor that did New Boston, did the Bedford schools. You know, very consistent there, local contractors that we use. But EMC oversees everything. We give you timelines. We work with utilities with the application. We do pre and post inspections with EverSource. Because they're paying a large portion of this project through rebates, they're very much involved, and they're going to do that pre and post inspection with you to make sure that what we put into their software matches to what was installed, that you're happy, and you're seeing the energy savings, which is really what drives these programs. Not sure if you're all aware, but there's a systems benefits charge in your electric bill that you all pay per KWH, whether you're residential or commercial. The money you put in is what funds this program. It's not just the utilities being, you know, just nice about it. The PUC mandated that, so that's where the rebates come from. so that's where the rebates come from. So if you don't use that money, other school districts do, or commercial customers, but again, you've taken advantage of it for many, many years. And so that's kind of just the, you know, the cut and dry of the program. The rebates, like Tom had mentioned, it's gone up and down. When we did the gymnasiums at the time, they were trying to sneak some projects in at year end, and that was, I think, almost a 75% rebate. It was very substantial. We've gone back to, I think, 40 cents per KWH, which was extremely low compared to what we've been used to. They've since, because we've just re-upped for our next three years contract, we're at 50 cents per KWH, which is what our savings, our, our proposal is based on. It's, it's a better project as a lighting project standalone. I'll, I'll let Joe kind of speak to the comprehensive, but again, our experience has been more focused with the lighting. Once we did the auditorium, that was turnkey. Again, that was the contractors for the acoustical tile, the painters, the flooring, the seating companies, all people that you guys had contracted with, but we oversaw that. Same kind of, you know, scenario with a, with a comprehensive project. But the lighting rebate has always been there. What we're seeing now with a lot of utilities, efficiency for months, really the first one where they're starting to back away from the rebates for LED, because they know that pretty much when you go to the hardware store, let's supply house, you're buying an LED light to replace the one that you have. So they're, they're more interested in sustainable projects and comprehensive projects where we can get other energy savings. Lighting is the first thing you see. You know, you guys did a retrofit years ago with a, from a 32-watt TA fluorescent down to 30 watt. Again, you can kind of see, we've got different color, you know, lamps here, the lighting is not great. So, you know, it's a, it's a good time to do it, they're nearing end of life, the rebates are still there to back it up if we were to do the lighting as a standalone, but it's no whiz near what they were throwing at you when back we did the gymnasiums, and that was an aberration. They just had goals to meet, and the end of the year, they threw some extra money, and we were able to sneak them in by year end.
So Joe, if you don't mind, just the comprehensive nature, because the comprehensive nature means at least three measures in a project to get a comprehensive incentive from ever-source, which greatly enhances your, up to almost a half a million dollars. So talk about how the boilers parlay into that, just real quick, so people understand what I mean by comprehensive.
Yeah, absolutely. Just a concept.
They're not going to hear you at home.
Should I, never connected to the screen, should I just go?
You need to talk into a microphone for the people at home to hear you.
They're just not going to hear you.
So based on what Tom just said, there's a, there's a tiered approach with the comprehensive incentives. When you, when you discuss prescriptive, if you, you were to just put in a heat pump, it's going to be $1,000 for that heat pump. But if you were to include the lighting, a heat pump, and a boiler, it's a comprehensive bonus on top of all the prescriptive incentives. And that bonus, as a tier three project, would be 60 cents per kilowatt hour that you wouldn't get as any single project, including up to 50% for your building automation and controls, roofing insulation, 50% for roofing insulation. As you build these projects, that's why we look at multiple measures, because you're maximizing your incentive amount. We were able to, in Northwood, present a comprehensive package that half the roofing insulation, one half building automation and controls, additional benefits, 60 cents per kilowatt hour saved associated with the boilers. The, the, the lighting stays at, at, at the 40 cents, but it also bumps it up a tier. So that's, that's basically why we try to build in as many non-prescriptive measures that are, that are providing savings, like building weatherization, and basically anything that's going to, that's going to generate KWH savings is going to, is going to build up that comprehensive incentive and just make that project that return on investment that much.
This comprehensive approach is fairly new to ever-source. They've always done like custom projects where they'll look at a processing facility or something, and they might throw some more money at it, you know, based on an engineering study. Now we have the ability to, with any project, you put three qualified measures in there, and that's where that, that tiered approach goes to. So they're, they're done with just prescriptive incentives, you know, a low-hanging fruit lighting, let's get these other measures. Again, lighting is a small percentage of your electrical usage versus your HVAC, so the comprehensive approach is really new from ever-source in the past year, and they're, they're putting money behind it to back it up.
So therein lies a lot of the rationale behind this phase one, and so this, this spreadsheet you have in front of you, that I have these two 11-by-17s, which is isolating a phase one, these measures that you have that are all red. In that report, if you remember, we kind of rate them, red, yellow, and green, and red is imminent, something that you've already had on your capital improvement plan that you, that you should be replacing or are planned on replacing. We agree that, yes, it should definitely be replaced. A lot of this is geared around really old controls, of course, the lighting, boiler rooms. Everything is on this list, so it actually matched up perfect with what you already had on your capital plan. But that in conjunction with the, the attractive nature of the incentives right now, but also, so there's 112 total measures we looked at, $31 million in overall improvements, things like renewable energy, that would be a great phase two, phase three, phase four down the road. Let's get things under control under our phase one where you get to the buildings to the, where they're the most efficient without going renewable just yet, because it doesn't really make a ton of sense for us, and I think you guys, especially from a budget standpoint, is to go a complete big solar system or something renewable, when you're going to reduce your, your lighting load by 327,518 kilowatt hours, right? You're doing the lighting project first. So you, you obviously would size your solar system vastly different after that LED project, because you're reducing your load already by going LED. And there's nothing that's going to be a quicker payback than LED to get that many kilowatt hours reduced in one shot, right? So that's why this phase one is, it's, this is a combination of many, many, many attempts to different things that we put in and out of the spreadsheet. This thing actually ties into a much bigger monster spreadsheet that's all dynamic, every measure, savings, incentives, it's all tied together, which we went over with your administration. And allows us to, it's a tool that we built to pick and choose, that's why it says in or out on the, on the right-hand side. So if you took one of those out, it would redline it. It doesn't mean it went away, because it's now a part of your capital plan, so that might be a phase two, phase three, Epping, or Littleton, or all these other schools that we're doing this product, these projects with. But this entire project is self-funding. So this mechanism is, I don't know if Scott has gotten into, is, is really geared around the second page. This front page ties into the second page, which is a cash flow analysis for a taxes and fees purchase, which I've been doing these schools, with schools for 22 years. Probably 99% of the projects have been via taxes and fees purchase. Rates are extremely competitive to a bond, there's no cost to issue a taxes and fees purchase. You get the entire year with no payments. So once you enter into a taxes and fees purchase, say you sign the paperwork in March, your first payment is due March of 2025. So it's, the design, the intent is for schools and municipalities, of course, to do energy efficiency projects like this, where you're garnering the savings the first year that makes your first payment, right? So you're literally not, you know, of course you're not taking the savings out of your budget, you're using those savings to make the payment for the taxes and fees purchase. Therein lies, you know, the self-funding mechanism that you've got in front of you here.
Yeah, Tom, if I could just interject for a moment, one thing that I explained to the board, which I want to reiterate, is that we have done a similar project before, but it was the same company that was doing the project, EMC, was also the financing arm. This is different, where EMC is, is straight, is doing one component. They're going to be doing the project management, doing the RFP process, overseeing that, and the financing will be done by a separate, you know, entity, whether that be, there are financing companies, there are banks who might want to do this, and as, as, as we have talked about, modest decreases in the interest rate have significant cost savings. So Tom, you had alluded that if we get even, even less than a half a percent decrease in the interest rate, we could see that payment just wipe away completely.
Yeah, so the tool, and we've bested around with this with Brian and Scott many times, and I did it with Scott just today, just going around the interest rates to see what they, they would land. And I, I check them all the time, just to keep up with them, so we're not putting interest rates that obviously aren't realistic. So 4.8 is, we try to be conservative in both savings, interest rates, costs, so that, you know, when it comes down to it, we could kind of over-deliver, right? You don't want to under-deliver when you bring in a rate of 4.8 and then get the bids back and they're 5.6, your project looks vastly different. So just, just checking on it, it looks like it's about 30%, 30 basis points less than that. So if we change that rate to 4.4, 4.5, your annual contribution, which is on the left-hand side in the, in the pale yellow box with the green zero underneath of it, that, that represents the amount of money you'd have to put towards your annual project, starting in 2025, to do a $2.9 million project, which includes three new boiler rooms, LED lights in every classroom in the entire district, all the building envelope, the doors, all the things that are listed on that front page. The only thing that's, the delta between the savings and your payment, which is listed in that first column, is $15,473. But if you change that interest rate to 4.8, that $15,000 almost goes away entirely. So it makes a huge difference when you're talking a 17-year lease purchase. And the reason we chose 17 is because that's really, it's kind of a reverse yield curve right now for financing, where they love the 17-year versus just the 10-year. 10-year used to be kind of the favorable term, shorter debt, but they want you to have the debt longer, of course. Does that mean you can't refinance this? Absolutely not. You could, if rates were to drop, you can absolutely refinance these taxes and fees purchases. You're not stuck with it. If you were to get in excess of funding somehow, I know that's not always likely, but say you do, you can pay down the loan, it's not, there's no penalties to prepay it. So those are the kind of things you can build into the taxes and fees purchase, so it's extremely flexible, again, a year without any payments, and it's designed for you, it's designed for schools and municipalities. Bank of America will definitely bid on this, because you're, you're a favorable school system, you have 27, 2800 students, great tax base, they'll, they'll definitely bid on this to be aggressive. Municipal leasing consultants is a company that Scott also knows. We send them 100 projects a year to, to look at for financing for schools. They are a broker, but they'll send out this project, they'll, once you guys know what your phase one looks like, say you like this project, they'll take this, send it out to 15 banks, they'll provide their best and final number, and that goes directly to you guys, that has nothing to do with us. We're the engineering company, and as Scott said, we'll build the project. We keep all the contractors honest, we're looking over everybody's shoulders. Guys like Joe are part of the HVAC, he's a licensed HVAC person, he's watching the HVAC components of this project. Carl's a master electrician, he's, he's the guy who did the lighting on it, he's looking at the lighting project being done. Same with the other two mechanical engineers, they have their, their goals in this too, and objectives, but that's kind of the process on how we build these projects. But the design, again, this is not just because we just grabbed a couple of measures and made it, made sense. We went through this tool out of 112 measures and drilled it down to just these, because they are almost entirely paid for, and they, they address almost something in each of your schools. But it's a great start to a phase one. We've done projects with schools, we've done seven or eight phases of projects over the, over 10 years, right? So you're not going to do all these projects in one phase, everybody fully understands that, but I think this is a good start. And, you know, obviously open to any constructive criticism on what we've come up with for a phase one. There's 112 measures that are in that report that we can discuss. But little things like, you know, some of the ceilings, you know, that, they're not necessarily in this, but there's plenty of room in here to, if we get better numbers on the controls and the boilers, we can start doing some ceiling work too, right? So you do a nice LED conversion like in this space, a lot of these ceiling tiles are warped. The cost to do the ceiling in this room, I mean, it could be $15,000. You know, that's probably worth it, because it would change the entire look of this room. But that's something that we could also discuss as we get into the real nuts and bolts of it and get real granular, but for the most part, this phase one is what you see on the first page. And then you start planning out for future phases with your administration, of course, dictating what it would look like.
Just an example of this room is, you know, in, in that kind of capital planning tool, is carpet, is furniture, is bookcases, you know, going around, even some of the, you know, the security and the locks on the doors and the exterior doors. I mean, this room alone, you know, had four or five measures that we looked at, just to build that kind of plan. And again, a lot of that came back from, from Randy. He had a lot of this already on kind of his hit list, so we just kind of put some budget numbers on there, and, you know, this room had quite a few things.
And this, obviously, as you can see when it says loan on the, on the bottom chart there, $441,000 down payment. So that's taking all of the incentives from ever-source and putting it down on your project. So you're financing that net amount. So, I mean, from a fiscally responsible standpoint, I, I don't think it gets much better than, you know, a project that actually pays for itself, using every cent that ever-source has given you as a down payment, so that you're not, you don't have interest on things that you, you know, it's unnecessary. And you can see, and project cost, principal and interest, if that's just a flat or equal payment, does that mean that's exactly what it's going to be? Absolutely not, because the rates haven't come in from the bids yet for banks. But we tried to put together a cash flow that kind of shows, even with the worst rate, it's pretty darn close to being self-funded. One of the biggest savings in the project is LED lighting, and we did not take complete ombuds for savings for dimming. And we can't do that, because we don't know what every teacher's going to want their room set at. But there has been schools, gosh, what was the one that we just did, Campbell, that was, they left it at 50% because the LED lights are so, they're so much brighter, that at 50% light. So if you consider the fact that there's about $55,000 in annual savings, we're, we're about 20% conservative on that number. So if, we haven't done a single LED project where we have, we leave the lights over 90% of the actual capacity. 10% reduction on these lights is not linear, it actually is 66% reduction. So if you have a, you know, a 26-watt fixture, it's actually going to be more like 15 watts. So there's a significant savings, and again, when I say we're conservative, we're extremely conservative, probably to a fault, but it's better to be like.
Well, we're mandated by ever-source, they're still kind of in approval to me stage, where they're, they're allowing us to capture, so the advanced controls, that's what you have in the gymnasiums, the ability to dim those lights with occupancy through dimming, through daylight harvesting, high-end trim, you know, we, we took those high bay fixtures in the gyms, and we dimmed them down by 20% with an app on the phone that Randy has the ability to control it, to get additional KWH savings. Ever-source caps us at 35%. Again, as Tom mentioned, just by taking that high-end trim and dimming that light down to 80%, it's, it's closer to a 50 or 60% reduction before you talk about daylight harvesting and motion sensing, things like that. Again, this technology is very proven, you've had it for several years in some of the areas of your schools, the gyms, and now the, the auditorium also has that same advanced control. It's what we do, it's what Bedford has, it's what New Boston has, you know, it's, it's what Litchfield, Campbell High School has. You know, it's, it's something that you, the more you work with that system, the more savings you can get out of it. It's not just to set it and forget it, like the old motion sensors. So someone like Randy, who's really up on the system and can manipulate it, if you're not seeing the savings you want, you can go back in and manipulate it so that you can get additional savings.
Just one more quick, as I, I look at this sheet, I, I see things like the ERV wheel that's the third line on the front page is for $10,000. And so we're not just going up to a piece of equipment and looking at the tag and saying, ah, it's old, it needs to be replaced. That's a fairly new unit, it's just, if you saw in that report on the Bartlett section, ventilation, the heat wheel is actually coming apart, and the fear is that there's pieces of that heat wheel getting sent through the ductwork, and that can cause a lot of problems, right? So it doesn't mean that the entire thing needs to be replaced, but from a, from an auditing standpoint, it's important to note that we literally take apart some of the stuff and dig in and find out what really needs to be looked at, not just to say, okay, replace the entire thing for $100,000, when you could actually fix it for $10,000. You know, it'd be an easy thing to say when the thing's rattling around, sending stuff through the ductwork, that you'd probably replace the whole thing, but it's really just the heat wheel, which is obviously the most important piece, that's where you're recovering all your energy from. So we spent a lot of time on the analysis side of this thing. I think the report's fairly indicative of that, but we only put a paragraph in each portion of that report for each school and each segment. There's a lot more behind that paragraph, I think, is the point that I'm trying to make, is that, again, it wasn't just a, a tag report, where you look at the tag and say, ah, these boilers are 20 years old, should be replaced. I mean, if they're 20 years old, they've been very well maintained, it's not the same as a piece of equipment that hasn't been maintained at all, that's vastly different, you know? And the boiler rooms are an important piece of this, because most of these that we're talking about are cast iron sectioned boilers. Right now, cast iron is, is, it's, it's, if anyone could make cast iron sections for boilers, you'd be wealthy. They're about 52 weeks to get, or 52 weeks to get a boiler, longer.
Yeah, 90 weeks, the last, I had spoken to you recently, it was 90 weeks to get a boiler, 25 to 28 weeks to get a section for a boiler, for a failure. 25 to 28 weeks to get a section for a boiler, for a new material failure.
In the case of my town in Nottingham, we just did a boiler replacement there. They lost, I think, three or four days of school last year because they had a section that went bad. They had glycol leaks. It was, you know, imminent failure in that building because I think it was 1996, if I remember right, and they had no redundancy there either. So in Nottingham, that was something they really had to do, and they just could not afford to lose any more, you know, days of school.
If I could just point out, just to refresh the board, that we do have redundancy. You'll note on this one, we have two boilers at St. Maple Avenue, right? One of them is an issue. You know, the primary is fine, but the backup one is an issue with our exhaust, et cetera. And in this is to address the backup portion of it. So that, as Tom said, if something does happen with one boiler, the other one, you know, is your redundancy, and we have that in all of our, all of our buildings. Glen Lake, if you remember, we had to replace one of those boilers. So it's very, very important. What's absent here is, you know, the HVAC, you know, some of these rooftop units, which we just allocated, I think $60,000 to replace a rooftop unit at Mountain View Middle School. That would be part of a phase, phase two. This, we, when we went through all of this a couple of months ago, we looked at some of these projects. We've been talking about heating controls and every, I talked to Jared about heating controls like all the time. Like this will address, you know, the heating controls. The next phase of this will deal with our HVAC, you know, rooftop type units, which are old, they're still functioning, but it would be the one, the next target that we would have. But Tom, I'm not sure, I was trying to fill out a state report so these guys can sign it tonight, but, you know, this is multi-phase. I mean, there's a lot of things that are included in this. It's very, very comprehensive if you've taken a look at the report, but it's not something that we're going to do like all in one year. I mean, you couldn't get anybody to do all this in one year anyway, so.
No, no, that's right. That's why this phase one is what, this phase we could get done this year, right? And you make a good point about the ventilation. So like Bartlett, you've got, with the exception of the two air handlers, you've got really no mechanical ventilation there. So that would be a logical phase two to address ventilation where you don't have it. Obviously, that's a pretty important place to start. We also don't want to start sealing up buildings that doesn't have mechanical ventilation. Everyone's very aware of that. So we're trying to do, make the most logical steps here. And so the phase two would definitely be ventilation related and building automation controls because almost everything in the district is fairly integrated with the control systems. And that's really is what's making everything work. That's the brains and the heartbeat behind everything. So get everything to one uniform system that's up to date. It's an open system. Again, it's not proprietary, so you're not stuck with anything. But yeah, no, Scott's right, 100% ventilation would be a lot, most logical phase two, phase three, so on and so forth. Because ventilation is, it's very expensive, which is why, even though it's supposed to last 20 years, schools inherently, it's 40 years and 50 years, and, you know, it's just the way it kind of goes. You have ventilators that are really going to last 15 to 20 years, and you've got some that are 33 years old. So, what are you going to say, Sam?
Yeah, as we, as we discussed, the building automation and the controls, one thing, we have Eric, our professional engineer, spent 10 years designing building automation and controls, and is certified in Niagara N4, or Tritium Niagara N4. We ensure that any control platform, any boiler platform, they're all open protocol. So in the end result, as you start to receive service contracts and want to go out to bid for service, any legitimate automation company will be able to come in and service this system. It isn't going to be proprietary to anyone. You won't be locked into any one platform based on our specification whatsoever.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dan. Can Dan answer the question?
I have an off-the-wall kind of question. Is there any significance to the old-style lights that give off heat and we're replacing them with LEDs which are very non-heat that would affect any of the cost? Of course, in the summer, maybe the fans aren't running, but in the winter, we have the heaters running.
Yeah, we take a penalty for that with our calculations, for the heat output of the lamps, for sure. Yeah, no, absolutely.
So you factor that in?
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
And the more you dim LED lights, the longer they last. They like to be dimmed, unlike fluorescent does not like to be dimmed. You know, they'll, you actually shorten the life expectancy of a fluorescent LEDs. You'll prolong it because the drivers aren't taking as much heat. It's middle heat relative to a fluorescent ballast, but the more you control it, the longer it's going to last.
Jared, go ahead.
Thank you, Jared. Just a quick question on your open source for security controls. If we moved away from Honeywell, do we have the ability to have the appropriate IT security controls that are in place? So I'm looking through your platform. You say that they have, you know, sign-on but not single sign-on or something along those lines. Would we be able to put any kind of policies like that in place with an open source system?
Oh, absolutely. 100%. And you could track whoever's using the systems too. So you'll know who logged on, if any changes are made, or when somebody logs on. All of that is traceable.
Okay.
Yeah. Eric, like you said, Eric is our controls expert. He designs all these. He did them for the federal government for the Naval Porters Shipyard for 10 years, so he's very used to that. Yeah, the firewall aspect and the safety and security of your control platforms. It's an easy way to get into your building, so we're very cognizant of that. That's a great question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Anyone else, questions, comments?
So I would maybe just share, having spent some time with these guys and having reviewed the report, they're happy to go into a lot more detail. These guys love this stuff, and it's fun to talk about this with them. There's a lot to digest here. So I think now's the chance if we have questions for EMC, but we'll talk more about this.
Yeah, I, the reason, I've been, I've not been bashful about, the reason why I've been talking about this over the last several school board meetings is that we have very short windows in which we can do work summer. So in order, if this board wishes to proceed, the reason why we're here in January, you know, is because if we want to do something in the summer, the board will need to take action in, by, the latest, by late February, because we then have to go through financing. I spoke with our school district attorney today. He's done tons of these things. He's, I think he's even worked with, I know he's worked with our, one of the financing companies that I've looked at. So he has to kind of review contracts and things like that. So it's doable, but we just don't have the luxury of having meeting after meeting and getting into April. If you do, then you're looking at next summer. You wouldn't possibly be able to do any, any of the work. So that's always a challenge for us. All these projects that we've done, windows replacement, all these other ones, you know, summer is our, is our bread and butter to get a lot of the work done. It's not to say you can't do work during the school year, but it's more, it's more challenging.
Yeah, the lighting is something we definitely can do off hours. A lot of our schools, as much as we'd like to take advantage of that, you know, eight or nine weeks in the summer, most of our schools, the lighting piece at least are done second shift. You know, we're fully occupied. We've done it, you know, when schools are in COVID and everything. It's really is just the nature of the beast, but the other measure is taking a boiler offline and things like that is much more relevant to a summer install.
Yeah, and getting quality mechanical contractors to do these projects. As Scott said, if we reach out to them in May or June for a summer project, clearly you're not going to be doing boiler projects in December. Not really a great way to approach business. They're already booked for projects next year, right? And they're doing it now, as Scott had said. So most of the projects that we do for schools, which is 99% of our projects are schools, February is when they're approving projects. So we can get the best mechanical contractors to provide bids for your projects, right? We want the best, we want the best possible mechanical contractors. We don't go out, we want the JV squad to be doing this in June. It's not a great process. We want the best contractors we can get to provide the bids. So that would be the only thing. You can wait as long as you want. It's just, I'm just telling you, the natural progression, next steps for us are typically February, we would like to get to know what it is, is palatable for you guys financially, and then we can start garnering bids from the mechanical contractors for said projects, especially the boiler rooms.
So that's where I wanted to kind of, I know I've had conversations with a few of you about this in terms of, you know, on the second page here, Tom and your team, you know, with an interest rate of, you know, 4.8%, we would be looking at, you know, hypothetically a $15,000 annual cost. If that percentage rate were to decrease even a half a percent, it could be nothing. But I, but I wanted to certainly see from the board's perspective, if we had about a $15,000 annual payment, I believe one of the board members asked me, well, where is that going to come from? One, it can come from our capital reserve fund, because everything on here is the replacement of an existing capital asset. So that is, would be the most natural place to go. If the board was not so inclined to go that route, then the other one would just simply be from a facilities, you know, repair or replacement equipment line. And if there was not enough funding in a particular year, then we have to do a budget, a budget transfer. But capital reserve fund, and I was talking to our attorney about it, like that makes the most abundant sense because you already have that in place. There's ample, this obviously, it can handle $15,000. More than likely, we wouldn't have that payment until next March. So it makes it even, even that much more palatable. But I, really, it's your, it's your decision. If it's something, the reason why we're having this conversation now as opposed to February or March, because if we do anticipate that we want to do some of this work in the summer, the board has to take action, you know, by next month to proceed. And then I have to do a lot of work, you know, on my end with respect to Tom, work with two, I'm already, I already have discussions with one of the financing folks. Tom has been soliciting a couple of banks on our behalf as well. So I think we'll get a pretty competitive interest rate, all things considered, where, but if the board is comfortable with this and what's included in this, then we would need to know in the next one or two school board meetings, for sure.
So Ellen had her hand up. Hang on one second. Ellen, go ahead.
I think they, I think they answered it. Financing of this does not, I'm making a statement in a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
We don't need to go to the public for any of the financing part because we already have the.
You have what's called a non-appropriation clause will be part of the financing.
Right, okay.
What I will do, and again, everything goes through our district council, and I know Tom's group has done dozens of these projects, if not more. Gordon Graham, who's our attorney, has done dozens of these. So this is not, there are, there's a specific statute which allows for this. So it's really, really very common to do it. We do it for a lot of our ITs, and we buy laptops, et cetera. We have a lease purchase as well.
And in fact, a lease purchase is exactly how we did the first and second Honeywell phases that we did years ago. So this is just a new version.
And I, and the reason why, when we thought about this at first, you know, when we had our first meeting, you know, we were looking, I said to you, oh, we might be looking at a $10 million, right? And then that, that would be much different. Then you'd be talking, and you wouldn't have all the energy savings.
The rebates, the savings.
Right. Then I think that's a board decision whether or not you want to put this on a warrant, et cetera. But as this, as you can see, this is, this could be cost neutral. There might not be any cost depending upon the interest rate, but it could be as high as, you know, $15,000 or more, a little bit more than, you know, on an annual basis, which, all things considered, you know, we were looking to spend $100,000 on each heating controls project. So I think this kind of, you know, makes sense. And as, one thing that I've been following is, ever since we did the New Boston project with Eversource, is that these incentives and these rebates, they come and they go. So I was looking at a program for myself called New Hampshire Saves. Well, it just got re-upped, but it came this close to kind of going away. This is where, if you were to put energy-efficient appliances or mechanicals in your house, you might get a significant rebate. But sometimes they, they're there and sometimes they're not. So right now, they're there. My concern is that if we wait, then they can go away. And that's not a scare tactic by any stretch, but when you can get, like on those heating controls, half off, 50%, that's hard to look away from.
Well, you talk about the residential side, just to sidetrack here, I did my installation of my house a couple of years ago, it was $8,000 rebate by Eversource. Last year, it's down to $4,000 for the residential. They're trying to spread that money out a little bit more, so, and that's what they've carried this year. So program changes a lot.
There's a point, 2022, sorry, where they actually came to us and said, we're putting the enhanced incentive programs like this on hold entirely, $0. And that, a lot of projects were held for another year because the dollars literally went away. So you're not wrong. I mean, you say they come and go. Sometimes they can go pretty abruptly.
With PUC, at that point, if you guys recall, there was a lot of media about that. The PUC tried to get rid of that systems benefits charge. So for half a year, it stopped, you know, construction, which is, you know, it took a lot of work for the, you know, legislature to get that back up and running. But that won't be an issue, but in terms of the amount of incentives on a standalone project, it's not comprehensive. It's definitely downward.
So Dan, and then Jared, Brian, did you?
Cool. So having been part of Honeywell one and two, which I was in favor of both of them, and it was hard to hear you say that the controls are ancient and need replacement.
That makes us ancient, Dan.
Pretty much.
We talk about the building.
Looking for a heartbeat, if Scott is looking for a heartbeat, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Jared?
No, I'm good for now, but since you said it. I just know that during the budget deliberations, anything like this, they would like to at least get notification of and at least contact with.
Yes.
They don't have any kind of meetings scheduled about any, you know, in February or March, so it's just kind of, we have to get together and think about how.
Well, they're going to have a meeting scheduled at the deliberative session because they have to.
True, but that's, that's only for things that are changed at deliberative, and I've already talked with the.
I'll, I'll reach out to Joe, because I have to anyway. He sent me an email and something else, so I'll, I'll reach out to him on this.
All right. I know Brian.
I was just going to share very briefly. We're talking a lot about the fiscal impact of this. We can't underestimate how significant the improvements in the learning environment are. So better lighting, better air quality, better comfort level, less noise, less distraction, all of those improve teaching and learning. So we're talking money here, but in addition to the money, I think that we can't lose sight of how important it is to improve the quality of the educational environment.
And to, you know, go after something at every school, I think is important, too. They're all being served with this first phase.
Jenny?
And Dan, I'm sorry about the ancient thing, but.
Oh, no, it's totally appropriate, and it's factual, so I'm okay with that.
It's much like the heat wheel scenario, we're not ripping out things that are working properly, right? That's important for people to know. It's not because we're just attacking the Honeywell situation. Great company, been around a very long time, but it's to, we're looking at the things that really have to be addressed. We're hearing it from your maintenance staff, the people in the buildings. That's why we're addressing those particular measures in those particular schools, not taking out things that are working just fine. I mean, I think that's important for everyone to know that.
So Jenny had your hand up.
Yeah, I just agree that we should go ahead with this. It's similar to our Honeywell project, which was, gave us very good returns. The cost is low. We get energy efficient and we back up our facilities. It just doesn't make any sense not to go ahead with it, I think.
Thank you, Jenny. Ellen, go ahead.
Would it be appropriate if the board's willing to approve this this evening instead of holding it over and over?
It's okay. I would, let me have the opportunity, I do want to reach out to the budget committee. We have a good relationship with them. And even if it's just simply a courtesy of this is what we're doing, and there'll be a meeting, you know, in February or whatever it is, that everybody wants to come to it. I think that would be, we're fine in that respect. I appreciate Jared, you bringing that up.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jared.
Just another kind of rhetorical question, because looking out for this plan, phase one, 17 years, are we looking to have these buildings still in 17 years as a strategy? And that's, again, I'm not asking for an answer, but rhetorically, we've talked about the potential of a new school. And so I agree that this is great if we're keeping our stuff, but are we looking to potentially replace a building or two or three in five to 10 years? That's something we also have to consider. So I just want to kind of mention that. I, I like this. It saves money, it's a plan, but this is kind of status quo. And what are we doing is kind of that next level, five year plan? And does this fit into that? That's something that we have to think about as well.
Thank you, Jared. Go ahead, Nicole.
I really liked the forward thinking aspect of that. Thank you. I just wanted to jump on with the student learning and whatnot. We heard from Mrs. Bean, I think it was last meeting, that it gets very cold in her classroom. She has a thermometer in there. I've heard this from other teachers. So I don't think we should discount the impact this would have on the learning environment.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. All right. So anyone else, questions, comments before we let these guys go? And we can bring this back. We do have a short board meeting next before deliberative. Go ahead, Dan.
I just wanted to thank you, Jared, for making that comment. And, and as you were making that comment, I said, yeah, that's true, except what are the chances we're gonna get building funding in the next 17 years? Well, I'll leave it there.
All right, I won't do it, Dan. I won't, I won't. I've been really good.
But no, that's an excellent observation.
It is an excellent point.
And, no, that was really.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So anyone else, questions, comments? So we'll bring this back to either the February 5th, it's a short meeting, or definitely the next one, depending. But yeah, we need to reach out to, to Joe.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it.
We discussed the learning environment. We do have STEM kits while we're on site. We can go through classrooms, whichever age group, and, and teach them about our STEM kits and what we're doing in the building and, and the process that we take.
Yeah, any grade level, but really good point, Joe. Starting at like the fifth and sixth grade is, is really cool. That's where studies say that really it kind of resonates a little bit. But we can start with something pretty small. But even in like a high school or tech aspect, you can bring them into the audits. It's pretty cool. It actually has made a huge impact on several students. We've received letters about how they've gone into engineering, or they've gone into building automation trades or mechanical. I mean, everyone hears about, there's a severe lack of HVAC technicians, electricians, so on and so forth. So if there's, if there's a, if there's a desire to get kids involved in this, we would love to make them part of the audit process. Obviously in a safe manner, we're not gonna have them on trusses and 40 feet in the air, you know, but aspects that are safe and make an impact, we'd love to make it part of the project. So, good point.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So we're gonna move on to approving January 8th school board meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look at them?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 8th, 2024 school board meeting minutes.
Thank you, Jane. Ellen, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, one abstention, which is reta. Thank you. Committee reports A and F.
I'd like to begin the A and F section by making a motion that we approve a, excuse me, a total manifest value of $2,495,221.57.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second? Right, Ellen? Go ahead, Dan.
We've got some payroll and some taxes, 1.7 million. Sped activities, special education, Durham School Services. Let me get my notes.
It was two months' worth.
Yeah, it was a couple of months' worth, and that's 227,000. We had some out of district services for 44,000. And I believe those might be out of state for two months. We have several other sped contracted service for behavioral, 7,500. Then out of district services was the balance, close to 70 something thousand dollars, 75. So that's just normal services. So general expenses, the Goffstown Truck Center is close to 100,000. Primex, which we pay for our workers' comp once a year, 155,000. We bought some IT equipment from GovConnect for $5,400. We did a budget transfer last time for the software plugin for the report cards, $12,635. Home Depot Pro, which is our facilities, 8,800 supplies and equipment. Plodzik and Sanderson, our auditing company, make that second payment of 6,500 bucks. San Jose Septic Services at Mountain View, 5675. And propane from Dead River for about 31,000. We paid $15,375 for food. That's it.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
All right, Scott?
Yeah, so this, this is more notification. We did receive a, a fourth round of supply chain assistance from the federal government. This was for, on an SIA, SIAU wide basis. So that amount of over 60,000, part of that includes New Boston. So Laura is working on what that breakdown will be. But I just wanted to share that we are getting some assistance on the rise in costs of, of food. We did have to replace some equipment at Harlitt School, again, just as a note, as a notification to you, it was under $5,000. But it does show that the Food Service Fund, every once in a while, the stuff breaks and you have to repair it, and we have that fund balance to do that. We did receive a donation of labor and materials from Sousa Signs. That front, the front sign here at Goffstown High School, one of the posts, the metal was, was dinged up. And when they put the LED sign, they said, hey, when we, you know, we're gonna come back and fix it. Took a little while, but they did fix it, and it was a donation. They didn't charge us, so I want to thank the, the Sousa family has always been pretty good on, on the, on those types of things. So I just wanted to share that with the board. And that was it. We had a pretty light agenda.
I think.
For giggles.
Yeah.
It just threw in my brain, it was less than, it was $733. So it was below the threshold. We don't have to take official action.
That's correct. And because.
But we can't say thank you as a board.
Yes. Yeah. Which I have kind of done, so.
All right.
Thanks, Dan. All right, Budget Committee report, Jared?
Budget Committee. Meeting was had. Good meeting. You seen your packets, the Warren article for how the Budget Committee also voted to recommend or not recommend for our school items. So our operating budget was 11 to 2 to recommend. The capital reserves fund deposit, I thought was gonna be a lot closer, but it was 8 to 5 to recommend. And the petition, Warren article, the Budget Committee followed our, our thoughts and voted not to recommend 9 to 4. Also, as part of the Budget Committee, there was, there was stuff from the town. I just wanted to go over as your representative and how I represent you. We had a number of motions. I want to make sure I bring them up. One thing is, the town was using a median, median house price for Goffstown of 413,200. And Scott's not here to write it down, so he'll be in the meeting minutes. But as we look at our rates for deliberative session, if we could use any of our tax calculations to use the same number as the town, which again was 413,200, that way we can kind of do the comparison of what the projected rate would be for our taxes. Because I know that Scott really tries to do that, and I want to make sure that we had comparable apples to apples. As it relates to the town budget, as everybody knows, most of the time, I abstain from any votes in the town budget, with the exception of things that I've worked with Peter on, who's the select board member. The Goffstown Water Precinct, the Village Water Precinct and the Grassmere Water Precinct, of course, we voted to recommend that. The operating budget for the town, we voted to recommend. That was, I don't know if it was unanimous, I don't have it written down. The EMS Special Revenue Fund, this is one of those, if we don't get it, we lose money for the revenue fund, for the EMS. We followed suit and we voted to recommend. That was unanimous for the town. All the collective bargaining agreements, it was important that the school board also was voting in the favor of those collective bargaining agreements that the town had. So we had the DPW Teamsters, the police, the dispatch. And those three are what we voted to recommend. Again, that was unanimous. It was important that we had that solidarity, because they did support us as we had the teacher contracts and also the support staff. The fire apparatus was one that we've had for several weeks, or several years, I should say. That was to raise and appropriate $250,000 for that apparatus. I cannot remember what the final vote was, but I believe we abstained from that one. The library, CRF, the library's trying to do the same thing that we do, create a CRF fund to knock down their maintenance items. They tried to have that bond last year. They heard back from the, from the town, it was a no. But again, there's some things that they need there that they need to fix. So they're looking to do a CRF where they would vote to approve it, and then it would go to the select board to ratify their recommendations for any appropriations. We abstained from that. Again, that was because of the large conversations that happened last year and us trying to stay out of those conversations at the town level. Bernard, Bernard Park Pool Design, this was to raise and appropriate $340,000 to redo the pool at Bernard Park. That was to not recommend. The Budget Committee voted to not recommend that. Again, we abstained from this because if, if it was me personally, I probably would have voted for it. I know that our students use it, I know our seniors use it. But again, I represent you, I don't represent myself. So we voted to abstain. Crispin's House, that vote was voted to recommend. We, of course, abstained from that. And the Goffstown Main Street Program, to raise and appropriate 400, uh, sorry, $4,000, not 400,000, $4,000. And that was for crowd control, for the pumpkin regatta and for the other activities that happened. That directly goes to pay for the police and the sheriffs and those people that do crowd control. That is the one item that we did vote for. Again, that was because it had to do with community safety. But that's what we had at the, for the Budget Committee. And then, of course, we do have that meeting right after deliberative session, if there are any changes to the warrant articles. If there's changes, we'll be meeting to vote to recommend, not recommend. And one thing about this, Scott, I did receive a message from Danielle that said the Budget Committee would need to vote if any dollar amounts change or any wording or language changes occur. And that was from Danielle and their, their lawyer. So I think we just need to make sure we, we get that correct.
Yeah, it was my understanding that it's either.
Yeah.
Either wording or number changes.
Or both.
Right.
But I, I thought I heard you say that they couldn't change wordings at the Warren article or deliberative session.
That is correct. So you cannot change language in which it is statutorily required.
That, okay.
That's the, that's the key difference.
So there will be a brief one for any changes that happen at deliberative for those things that you change.
To the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Jared. Anything else for?
Nope, that was it.
Reta, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick question. So with the Crispin's House, you said, of course, we abstained from that one. Is that something that the board doesn't vote on?
We have in the past, and actually I voted to, I was the one that asked for it to recommend last year. There was a lot of debate and a lot of actions. And whenever really heated debates were occurring, I tried to take us out of them. I don't want the select board coming into our pool and, you know, changing our numbers, changing our methodology. And I wanted to respect Peter and that team to say, we are not gonna do that to them as well. So whether it's Crispin's House, whether it's the pool, whether it's a fire apparatus, all those things, I tried to take us out on and just make sure that we ask questions, because I think that is our prerogative. We could vote, but again, I think ethically, it was important for us not to vote because of the conflict that was occurring.
Can I have your conversation?
Uh, no, Diane. Thank you.
Did you have your hand up?
No.
Oh, did anyone else have their hand up over here?
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Nicole.
So, new to this, so with that caveat, does it make sense that we might have some of these discussions ahead of time so that Jared would know as a board how we felt about these issues? So he's not just going in blindly and making an assumption about what we would like?
Great question. And that's why I always ask, any, you know, some of these I didn't get, I didn't know about until that day, walking in. There are some that we did know. And I would always appreciate any kind of feedback people have, whether it's through a vote. And I always say, if somebody wants to talk to me so that at least I can understand perspectives if we don't wanna, you know, if we haven't had a full form thought. But yeah, not only that, but, you know, are there an opportunity that maybe these warrant articles could come through the school board? And that way, we could vote on it versus going to the select board. That's another avenue that we could have. But again, that would be them to petition us to do that. But I, I would appreciate that, Nicole, if we could do that in the future.
Thanks, Nicole. Jenny, go ahead.
I, I'm concerned a little bit about Crispin's House, because I know they do a lot for us, for our kids, with counseling and youth programs of all different kinds. So I think maybe that they're kind of someone who we should support, because we're kind of work together on a lot of things with our kids. So that seems to me like that would be something that, you know, that we should put our foot forward and, and support them. I know from a lot of things that I see all the time, of things that they're putting out, you know, there's a meeting about IT training. And there's a thing about IT, about the dangers of it. There's, you know, come in and talk, there's been a death in the community, you know, come in and sit down and talk with us. There's stuff going on all the time that Diane, thank you Diane, is putting our heart and soul into for our kids in Goffstown. And I think that's something that we really should support as a school. And I, I think the, you could talk to the board and, and explain to them what Crispin's House really does for our kids.
Yeah, Jared.
No, I appreciate that, absolutely. But, you know, for me, it's, they do a lot. The awesomeness of Crispin's House is amazing. But what about the library? Why wouldn't we support that? They do a lot for our students as well. We have our students come over. So that, that to me is, where's the delineation for us? And, and if I don't have that going into the actual meetings, you know, I abstain. Because all of these groups do things for our students. All of the groups do things for our community. Where does the school board stand? And should we, you know, look at one over the other and why? That's, that's the questions that I'm gonna get.
Yeah. All right, I saw a couple of hands over here. Scott?
Yeah, I, I mean, just as, as somebody who has, you know, been a Budget Committee rep for the Select Board and the School Board, it's tricky. And I, I've often recalled times where I had to vote for a small cut in the hopes that it would off, that it would, you know, prevent a big cut. So I, I think it's challenging whether, when you're ever you're representing a board. And I know Jared has come before you saying, you know, hey, how do you want me to go? Or something like that. And sometimes you have that benefit, sometimes you don't. I do think that going forward, I think it helps whoever is the Budget Committee rep to, to, for the board to say, we, we'd like you to vote on this. Or, you know, you have your judgment, you know, but it, it's a very tricky, tricky thing. But giving, giving that Budget Committee rep, you know, that directive is a, is a very big help. Because when in doubt, you know, one would abstain, you know.
I wasn't criticizing.
You know, I know, I, I was just saying that it is.
It is a good idea, just on a couple of the things that our kids will benefit from. Who knows?
I can't really explain, I think people who have, who've done it understand that, like you said, sometimes you, like ordinarily, if you're a school board rep, you wouldn't vote for a cut to the school board budget. But sometimes if you're reading the room and you're thinking, I'd rather have a $15,000 cut than a 30.
Exactly.
So you, it's, it's weird.
Exactly.
So just.
It's a tough position to be in, for sure.
Ellen, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I agree with what everybody's saying, that if we, I just don't think that the topics that may be coming up at a future Budget Committee meeting, we're gonna know enough in advance for a board discussion. Like it, I don't, can't think of any time when we would know that far in advance about a given anything that comes before, on their agenda. But if there is, I would be in full support of at least being aware of it and having some input as a board.
Yeah.
Especially when it impacts our kids. Like Jared said, everything they discuss impacts our kids.
Thanks, Ellen. Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I, you know, 100% reiterate what Jenny said, but it looks like we might be talking about Crispin's House later, so perhaps save that for then.
Right. But touching off what you said, Nicole, this board has never done that. We have never told our budget rep where we want to vote. And it may be something, if you're hearing chatter on a certain topic, I mean, because you went there and all this stuff is discussed, sometimes you don't know what's gonna be discussed. And we are trusting you to best represent us, but maybe having a little more guidance from us, however we can help you with that. Because, you know, we're, we're trusting you to represent us, and I think you've done however we can help you with that, because, you know, we're trusting you to represent us, and I think you've done a great job with it.
Thank you, Heather, and if I can just.
Yeah.
You know, this really started last year. For those of you that were at the Budget Committee meeting last year, the library debate was a mess. I ended up abstaining from that. And because I abstained from that, the vote failed. Somebody else also voted to abstain. But that was a very close vote, and there were more conversations for those of us that watched the Budget Committee. I know some, some of you were there, Nicole. There, there was, again, debates, and I don't agree with what's said most of the time, but again, I, my, it is paramount for me as your rep to have your best interests in my decision-making process. And that's all I think about as I'm your representative to the Budget Committee. So I thought it was best to abstain so that we did not engage. As an individual, I would have gone much different way. I would have voted for all of these items, one way or another. But I represent you, I don't represent myself.
Right. Thank you, Jared. All right, anything else on Budget Committee update?
No.
Okay. All right, so PNC, Rheta?
Yes, PNC had a very short meeting but covered a lot of topics. We had Stephen Borchet come to give us some of the statistics and analytics from the current website. And we're continuing to move forward with the goal of having the website updated this summer. So that will continue to be our, on our agenda. The award videos that will be presented at the deliberative session are in process, should be wrapped up by the end of the week with some new guest speakers. The other thing is Spring Fest 2024. This is coming up in April. We did it for the first time this past year. I thought it was a great success for those who were able to participate in it, and we need to decide if we want to participate again. It will be at St. A's this year. The Committee's recommendation is to, to participate again. We'll be looking, and if the Board is in agreement, we'll be looking for people to staff that. As you recall, we had two to three people for two-hour sessions.
I think you're near the axe-throwing booth, too.
If we register early, we can pick our locations.
It's the 13th of April from 10 to 4. So it's only a six-hour window.
And when do you need to have information from us?
I think if, unless there's, if we decide not to do it, I think it would be great if we could, if we could decide tonight that we want to do it, because I believe we have to pay a fee.
You gotta pay a fee, yeah.
And it's after, I think, another week. It's going to be opened up to the general public, so.
So does anybody have a problem?
I'll move that we participate.
Okay, so Ellen made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For Caroline. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous?
Actually, I have to abstain because.
Oh, did you abstain? I didn't see your hand up.
During, during the discussion, so I don't actually know what we're talking about.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't see your hand up. All right, so we have one abstention, Denise. All right, anything else?
And then just the last thing, that the Committee is also looking at the Mission Vision Statement that we discussed and looking at combining those two. I know that it goes into the handbooks, which are coming up really soon, so our next meeting is going, we'll, we'll discuss it in greater length at our next meeting. And Denise, because of the deliberative, we're looking at having our next meeting on the second Monday, so February 19th from 6:00 to 7:00. And that's it.
All right, thanks, Rheta. All right, Policy, we did not meet this month, so our next meeting is February 12th at 5:30 at the SAU. All right, CNE, Denise, or Jenny?
Yes, CNE's meeting was canceled due to snow in January. We'll be meeting again February 12th at 7:00 PM at the SAU. We'll be discussing the handbooks at that meeting, and I believe everyone has gotten copies of those sent to them previous to this meeting, and we will be going over those at that meeting, so please review them. If you have any questions, get them to Wendy so she can discuss them with the Principals, if you would, please.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
SAU Board, Shane?
Yep, the SAU 19 Board will be meeting next Wednesday, which is January 31st, at 6:30 PM at the SAU offices on School Street.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And as you all know, deliberative is February 5th at 7 o'clock at the Theater, but we are having a small School Board meeting here at 6:00. Just to go over some.
Say that again.
So February 5th, 6 o'clock, Goss Town School Board meeting here, and then we're going to walk down to the Theater at 7 for deliberative.
And our meeting will start at 6:00?
Yeah, our, yeah, just to go through some business and then we'll walk down, like we did last year.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're gonna, yeah, go ahead.
Again, just for giggles, A&amp;F is not going to meet that evening.
Right.
Correct.
Go ahead, Ellen.
We're not anticipating needing to make any motions or anything subsequent to the meeting?
We'll have to see if anything gets changed on the warrant articles.
Okay, so we're not, we're going to have a meeting, but we're not going to.
You adjourn it.
We're not going to adjourn it.
You're not going to adjourn it, you're just going to recess it until.
Right, in case there's something that changes at deliberative. All right, so that brings us to warrant articles. Scott, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so first things first, I didn't have tiny little paperclips, but this is the 2024 warrant, which you, there are two copies, and I know it's a little area to sign, so Ellen, you typically go outside the lines, so.
She's got a long name.
If you could, if you could sign this, I did, you'll see that I had to wait until the vote on the Petition One article, so that the recommendations are on there. You won't see a Budget Committee recommendation because it's not a moneyed article. But the, all of the other ones, the operating budget, just so you know, was an 8-0-0. Budget Committee voted 11-2 to recommend. Facilities Capital Reserve Board voted 7-1-0 to recommend. Budget Committee voted 8-5-0 to recommend. The petition warrant article for the night locks, the School Board voted 6-2 to not recommend. The Budget Committee voted 9-4 to not recommend, and then tonight you voted 9-0-0 to not recommend the tax cap article. So, on the operating budget. So you just have to sign those. So what we typically do is we, we discuss who will be either speaking to a particular warrant article and/or, you know, moving it, et cetera. And then Denise, we, you know, we have a little bit of a script, you know, per se, for the deliberative session. So the operating budget is typically the Budget Committee rep who would move it and speak to it. And I can always provide assistance. So Jared, are you okay with that? And then we just need a second?
I'm okay with it. I'd like to move it.
Who can second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, Shane will second it, and then Jared and I can, you know, I think we did that. We took turns on that. Capital Reserve Fund, would anyone like to speak to that? The deposit into the Capital Reserve Fund?
I can do it.
Okay, Nicole, speak, and you'll also make the motion. And then, who will second that one?
Wow, there's many volunteers though.
Yeah.
Who? Rheta?
Rheta will do it.
And then we, on the petition warrant article, that would be done by, presumably, somebody, a petitioner.
Yeah.
One of the petitioners?
Right.
Would speak to that?
Mm-hmm.
Would speak to it.
And then who motions and second?
They do.
They do, they do all that? Okay. Do they know that?
I'll, I'll reach out to them to make sure they know that.
Well, because this is new to us, so.
Yeah, right, we haven't had these before, so.
That everybody knows what everybody's supposed to do.
So I'll try to get, get ahold of the woman who, on, on the tax cap one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, and then the tax cap would be the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So as Jared mentioned, in terms of the budget article, that is something that is amendable in terms of the amounts. There is a 10% restriction, which is on the, I have it on the MS-27, which I haven't yet done. But to the Budget Committee, there's a form that the Budget Committee signs off on, which is our budget, the MS-27. And I don't know what that, it's 10% above the budget typically, where it can't be amended more than that. Same thing with the Capital Reserve Fund, anyone can amend the, the amount that we're, that we're recommending to deposit in. The petition warrant article, as Jared mentioned, if either the amount or the language changes, or both, the, the School Board and the Budget Committee have the opportunity to change their recommendation. So it's either or, or both. And on the Article 5, which is the petition warrant for the tax cap, because the language is dictated by statute, you can't change the language, but if someone were to amend it to a different percentage, up, down, whatever, then, again, that would trigger another vote by the School Board in terms of their recommendation.
Well, if I can, it would trigger a potential, but if a motion were not to be made, then it stands.
Right, exactly. It stands as it is.
Yep. All right, so we're all set with that, Scott?
Well, I, I think Dan opened up the door. So the, the question is, is that, does the Board just wish for this tax cap to be voted on as is? Two and a half percent up or down vote, it requires 60% vote? Or does the Board feel that a higher percentage, and this came up at our A&amp;F meeting, is better to put on the ballot if it was amended at deliberative session? Dan asked me, what would it look like if it was a 5% capper? And I'm like, I don't know, I didn't have the opportunity to do the math on that. So I could get you that, but it's not something that I can give to you tonight. So I just leave it at that.
Are you going to be able to speak to that, Scott?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, it sounds like that, something like that might come before us, so it might be helpful to have something to help us make.
So I can run different scenarios in terms of what, you know, what those will look like. You know, if it was, you know, I can run different scenarios and different percentages. I just didn't, I scrambled on Friday just to get you that so that we can get it out in the packet, so I just didn't, I just, I didn't have the time to really play around with it. And that's why I didn't do any forward projections either, because that's all speculative, too. But I can easily do.
Totally fine, just talking about for like, two weeks from now.
Yep, easily do that.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Two things. Didn't we vote on each of these, whether to, we recommend or don't recommend?
Yeah.
And it was not to recommend, right?
What are you talking about, the petition warrant articles?
Petition warrant, the two of them.
Yeah.
Warrant articles, that's number one. Number two, even if it passed, whatever it's going to end up being, the Board does not have to do it.
Yes, you do. If it gets 60% or more of the vote, you have a 2.5% tax cap.
That's the tax cap, not the other one.
Yeah, you're talking, she's, are you talking about both or one of them?
Okay, I guess I'm talking about one now.
Which one?
Okay, the night locks. Do we have to do it?
Night locks, correct.
We do not have to.
Yeah, so if the night lock article were to pass.
Yes.
The School Board is not required to spend the money on the night locks. However, you could not spend it anywhere else. So if you did not decide to pursue the night locks, then that, that $13,000 would drop into fund balance.
Okay.
But you could, you could choose to buy different, a different product.
Only if it were to be amended after deliberative.
To get rid of that, to change that language, okay. And the tax cap one would not impact this year's budget, proposed budget?
Correct.
But the following year potentially?
Yes.
Okay, so, and the only thing we'd have to explain what that would have done to the proposed budget we're going to come forward with is to try and help people understand what that would have done to the budget, to the one we're proposing. If that were in place now, what will be our options?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Go ahead, Rheta.
Yeah, going back to the 2%, 2.5% tax cap, I, I thought a lot of the reasons and rationale that we were not in favor of this at all is that we already have a form of government that allows participation. And I appreciate the, looking at the different scenarios, but does that really change our mind for all of the reasons that we discussed during, during the meeting? So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Rheta. Go ahead, Jared.
Ms. Chair and everybody, now that we've established what we're doing, I guess what's going to be kind of our comms program so that we can educate the voters, I know that's something that we've always worked on. But I think that this is going to be very important, that we put the right information out there, or the information out there. I just, Rheta, you working on something or?
No, I, and we, in the past, we haven't, except for, I think, maybe, you know, eight or nine years ago when we had, had a real need to be public. But I think it's, I think it's a good point that if there was any way, like what you did tonight, Scott, with like really showing a scenario so people can understand it, I think it's really helpful. Anyone that was watching tonight probably really appreciated the presentation because it was, this is what it's going to look like. So I think that for maybe, you know, maybe not all of them, but several of them, that we may consider putting additional information. I mean, you've got the information out on the website, but perhaps something that's in layman's terms of.
On GTV?
How to understand this, because they're going, you know, the 2.5%, people are going to have to vote on this, and who wouldn't vote on saving money? But I think it's important that we make people understand why.
I think Jared's question's a good one, though, because this is, we, we haven't been in a position like this that I can remember, in the sense that the budget has been talked about for what, Jared, two to three months, right? So people seem, I mean, if you're following it, like, it's been going on, like, but this is like brand spanking new. And do you want information, I mean, I could certainly cobble together some of these things that I did for you in your memo and just make it public, which is going to be in the minutes anyway, but like, or do you want more of that? If you want something like on GTV, then that's going to have, before the deliberative, that's going to have to happen like ASAP.
And I think, Scott, we'd want to be careful, that we would want the Board to direct us to do that.
Right, I can't.
I don't want anyone to think that this is, that this is a superintendent and business administrator response, that if you wanted us to put information out about, about the tax cap, I would really look for some directive to do that.
Right.
Jenny?
I think it would be important to put out information about how city taxes work and how the aldermen and school boards work differently than school boards in small towns, so that people understand why, in that situation, that tax caps are useful and important sometimes, because they don't have the go-back-and-forth that we do in our towns. So I think if people understood why big cities have tax caps, because of their situation of government, and why a town doesn't have them, because it has so much citizen participation in deciding the budget to begin with, it's like apples and oranges. I think that would be important to point out to people.
Rheta?
I would, I would think it would be important to share that we give the directive for Scott to pull something together. However, I think it, what you presented was great for us who are really involved in and understand it. I think it should be written for somebody that doesn't fully grasp it, so maybe simplify it a little bit. So, you know, what, what is it that we want them to understand before they go to vote and write to that? You know, what, what's the most important information, like a PowerPoint that is easily understood?
Nicole, go ahead.
Yeah, a great point by Rheta. I think for me, some of what was most powerful to hear during all of that was Shane's commentary on the real impact of what this has for school districts. And I think I read Rochester, for example, has had to cut over 30 positions since they started their tax cap. So what this really means to our school community, I think that's where it's really going to hit home for people.
Yeah, I think the tough part for Brian and myself is that, obviously, we'll, you direct us to do things, but we have to just, I tried really hard on that memo to you to be, be like factual. I, I agree that I, you know, on the tax bill part and the state, I mean, I'm passionate about how the, the numbers just don't line up there. But my presentation, if there was one to be, or put something together, I try to be very factual on that, to say, here's what the impacts are, you know, so that it seems, you know, I guess, not biased, I don't know. I'm just trying to, you know, put it in a way that it's, it's not slant, I don't want to be put in that position where I'm accused of.
Right. Jared, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think the audience appreciates it, too. I think what you pulled together for us, it was, it was, it was so clear to us, you know, it, so I, I trust, you know, what you put forward is, you know, really hitting the points that will make sense for the general community to understand. I mean, that's, I think that was what, you know, my, my take from that is.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Heather. I think during public comment, what Peter said was spot on about SB 2, on why it's so important that we have it. I look at that as one component. I would also say, if we had to do this for last year's budget versus this year's, this is what we'd have to actually knock off our budget. And oh, by the way, you know, the Budget Committee didn't come close to trying to cut all this money. So I think it's, it's really important to do that, but I agree with what Shane said as well. You know, the, the consequences of that action, I think, is important. So it's almost a three-phased approach of, this is what SB 2 is, this is why it's important, this is what the impact would be from a budgetary standpoint for a bottom-line budget, and this is the consequences if we had to institute that from last year into this year, and what kind of cuts we'd be looking at for services.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Dan.
Brian alluded to this, but we have to be extremely careful about electioneering. Any opinion that is, or conceived opinion that could be given, and we could be looking at a whole lot of trouble. When we have our meeting here, we can discuss, do whatever we want, have our opinions, because that's what we do, we have to do. But if we put something out to the public, only. something out to the public, only factual, bland, gray information. And I would be hesitant for anything else.
That's a good point, Dan. Thank you.
Very good point.
Anyone else? So I guess we need to, go ahead, Jared.
So, Dan, just building off that point, if I may ask, would the appropriate thing to say, this was our budget last year, if this tax cap was instituted, this is what our budget would be this year?
That's factual. That's not electioneering. It's not then saying, so look what would happen, so you don't want this. We've got to stay that away.
Right. It would just say what the number is.
Yeah, the, the numbers are the numbers. Math is math.
So I'd make a motion that we direct the administration to reflect a budget instituting the 2.5% proposal based on our last year's actuals.
Okay.
Based on last year's actuals?
Well, would it be based on the wording of the?
Based on the wording, last year's actuals.
See, I, I almost think that in some cases, that's a little contrary to what Dan stated. So, and help me out for a second. So I, I basically shared that it was around $1.1 million in terms of, that we would have to cut from the budget. I also shared that we couldn't do that based upon just cutting supplies or equipment, and that we would have to look at some, you know, it would be staffing, right? So it would be a combination of all things. But the, I think that you could get accused of a scare attack if you, if you say, well, we would, we would cut, uh, high school transportation, we would cut.
No, I don't think we, I don't think Jared went that far.
That would be implementing the action. This is just, what is the bottom-line budget?
Just, just the numbers.
Maximum numbers.
The dollar number?
They need to know what that means.
Oh, I know that. That I already know.
Yeah, I don't think people are going to understand it if they don't.
What does that mean? So what, cut them one point three million dollars?
Oh, great, $2 million.
Yeah.
They need to know the impact of it.
Right, but you can't, you.
No, you don't want to be threatening or sound like you're, the world, sky is falling.
Right, and so, is a deliberative session discussion better than what we're trying to do? And let the deliberative session speak for itself.
And the deliberative session is the next.
It's like, it's like in two weeks.
Right. That's the next step.
We don't have a whole lot of time.
Denise, Jared's withdrawn his motion.
I'll attract it, the motion.
So I, I think, what I have in this memo, I can put into a PowerPoint and make it, like, if you want me to do that. It's just, the language is already there, it's just copy and paste. It's not, and I.
For the deliberative?
Yeah, if that's what you want me to do. I, I thought it was, you read it, I thought it was fairly, I try to keep it even. I mean.
Yeah. Is everybody good with that?
And then if people want to have conversations like these folks did, or questions, then let, then we'll respond to it.
Is everybody good with just having it done at deliberative? All right. All right, so let's move on. Are we done now with warrant articles and everything?
Yeah.
Okay. So Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I wanted to let the board know that the New Hampshire Education Department has resumed facility inspections of schools. They haven't done this for a number of years. I think some of that was COVID, I think some of it was staffing. But Gofftown High School has been selected, so we will, I know, I know, randomly selected, again, again. We will, so we're working on the paperwork submissions, and then we'll anticipate a visit from the New Hampshire Education Department, so that'll be coming up. Keeping the same theme going, I let the board know that Glen Lake was selected for what's called a small school review. Mrs. Stoyl and Mrs. Kohler have worked really hard on providing all kinds of information to the New Hampshire Education Department. All those submissions have been finalized, and we will wait for the department to let us know if there are any next steps that we need to do. So I'd like to thank Mrs. Stoyl and Mrs. Kohler for the work that they put into that. Tomorrow is the primary day. That will be a distance learning day for us, as was January 16th. So the weather last week, we ended up getting about seven inches of snow at my house in New Boston. So I, I know that the weather was terrible. My concern was never the morning, it was always the afternoon in getting kids home. And so that's why we did not have school that day. I wanted to let the board know that I proposed some alternative language for the night lock citizen petition warrant article. That's gone to the petitioner. So it was mentioned at the Budget Committee public hearing that they were working on some, some language changes, so I proposed some language to them. And my last piece is, just last week, the Justice Department released the report on Uvalde. So the report is over 500 pages, but we're starting to take a look at that, and we'll be meeting with police and fire to discuss those action reports coming up. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any more?
Is the proposed language that you gave to petitioners something that would be appropriate to share with us so that we, if they propose it at deliberative, we don't get surprised and we can opine over that over the next couple of weeks?
Yep. And in fact, we have non-public this evening to talk about school safety, so this may be a piece that we'll discuss further. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. All right, anyone else? All right, moving on, we have to, we have second reads on policies. As you can see, our little cheat sheet where things were amended. So we're just going to go through one by one real quick to make motions and second and vote. So we have policy AC. As you can see, we have the amended part on the sheet. I have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy AC as amended.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, I saw Ginny's hand up. By Ginny, any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is ACR.
I'll make a, sorry, a motion to adopt policy or regulation ACR as presented.
Thanks, Shane. Second by Ellen. Further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is GBEAB.
They're just reversed on the, on the matrix, they're backwards.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to, um, let's go with the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt policy EG as presented.
Oh, yeah, it's backwards. All right, so Ellen, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so then the next one.
Move.
Go ahead, go ahead, Shane.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy GBEAB as presented.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so then the next one.
Move.
Go ahead, go ahead, Shane.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy GBEAB as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is ILD and ILDR. There's amendment there, as you can see.
Yeah, do we want to do these together? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt policy ILD and regulation ILDR as amended.
Thanks, Shane. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Next one, IMG.
I will make a motion to adopt policy IMG as presented.
Thanks, Shane.
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and the last one, JLC.
And finally, I will make a motion to adopt policy JLC as presented.
Thanks, Shane. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all this in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the administration to send out a communication to all parents about IMG, specifically unauthorized animals on school grounds. I am seeing a lot of parents walking dogs to pick up their kids, and this would be contrary to that, so we just might want to give them notification.
Didn't we address this at the subcommittee, the one that I did make?
Yes.
We talked about that discussion.
Yeah, we did.
How was that corrected in the fall, the meeting that I missed?
So the conversation at the subcommittee, as I recall, the question was, what if someone is picking up a student up and they have a dog in the car?
Yeah.
That was one of the examples.
Yeah.
The discussion that we had is that dog is supposed to be under the care and guidance of the owner.
Yep.
And that was the end of the conversation. I don't remember that we had any further discussion about it.
Right.
Do you believe that the policy as we just approved does not allow a dog to be in a vehicle when they pick up their kid from school?
Well, you're talking about walking a dog.
Yeah, mine specifically was walking.
I know. I'm going to start with the car and work my way outside the car.
I would think that the dog in the car is fine.
Yeah.
The dog on a leash, walking to pick up, Bartlett is the one I'm thinking about, is inappropriate?
Maybe if it would be okay with Mr. Talbot, maybe Mr. Gross and I could take a further look at this and come back and discuss this at the next board meeting.
Yeah, because.
I just, I'd like to get Scott to weigh in on kind of the risk liability pieces.
Yep.
So we need to change what we just voted on.
Well, let's see what they say, because we did vote that they're not allowed to come on school property.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to new business. So we have Diane McCarthy. She's going to come talk to us about Crispin's House and all the wonderful things that they do. Welcome.
Thank you. So, yes, as you know, Diane McCarthy, I'm the executive director for Crispin's House Coalition for Youth. And I'm here tonight, I need to take you guys back to your Budget Committee report, because I am here tonight in response to your choice through your rep to abstain in the recommendation for our warrant article. I think it's important to note, as well as many of you know, I was a Budget Committee rep for six years. And I say it all the time, the Budget Committee seats are the most uncomfortable in town. And I'm not talking about the furniture. It is a really difficult navigation that I do appreciate. And as you all know, your Budget Committee rep abstained on our vote. And while I recognize that abstention is not a vote against, for which we are very appreciative, it is also not a vote for. And that is cause of concern for me, because we have been a long-term partner of the school. We have a kindred mission, as you will, not shared, we work independently, but at the end of the day, we're all trying to move our kids forward and help them grow into being happy, healthy adults, living productive lives. So it occurs to me that I have not been here in some time to share with you what Crispin's House programs are and what we do, and why you might want to vote in favor of our article. And just to be very, very clear, we're not expecting a revote unless there is a change. But in the event that there is a change to our warrant article and there is a vote again, it is my hope that our conversation this evening would engender the support for a recommendation for a warrant article, because our funding is incredibly important. So I'll go back, take you guys back to the beginning. Crispin's House is about 33 years old now. It was founded in 1989 by a group of community leaders who noticed that maybe they weren't doing so right by their kids. By the time we hit the early 90s, it was absolutely unavoidable. We all knew that we weren't doing the best possible jobs for our kids. We worked really hard to get that behind us. And I know there is a strong coalition of people who work very hard to make sure that we don't go back there. This brings us to one of our programs, though, one of the most salient programs we have, Youth Forum. That is one of our oldest, and that was formed immediately in response to the suicide crisis experienced by this community in the early 90s. Youth Forum started out as just our town leaders. We're talking GPD, school, Crispin's House, clergy, fire, library, parks and rec, meeting every month to, you know, to connect about what they're seeing, how can they better serve the kids. Somewhere along the way, people smartened up and realized, hmm, maybe we need the youth voice in here, too. If we're going to have a youth forum, maybe we have kids. So it got moved to the schools. And for the last probably 25 years, I'd say, it's been hosted here in the schools, and it's been co-hosted by a GHS counselor. Currently, that's John Webb, who is your SAP, and then Crispin's House, who for the last 10 years, during my tenure, that has been me. Over time, we have morphed into a bit of a leadership group as well, empowering these kids to take on new initiatives. But it really does support the school culture and climate. Additionally speaking, this is the conduit through which different opportunities for our students come through from the DEA, from NAMI New Hampshire, from juvenile justice, from any regional efforts. Also of note is, it connects all of our local professionals who work with kids. And that is significant when you realize in a time of crisis, you need those relationships. So when I was hired, we were in an opioid epidemic, I think we still are, but nobody wants to talk about it, enough said. There were a lot of statewide meetings going on, all different prevention agencies, mental health agencies, coming together. And what I heard over and over again from communities is, they couldn't seem to bridge the gap between the agencies. And Gofftown had it, and we have it, for many reasons, our culture, but also Youth Forum, because we're getting together already, once a month, in a planned meeting. I think it's also important to note that, at the time, I was working with Bill Exner, and he was one of the founders. And I said on multiple occasions, I'm so grateful that you were proactive in setting up Crispin's House. And he stopped me. And he was like, Diane, this wasn't proactivity, this was reactive. Now it's proactive. But we were reactive, and our kids and our community were in crisis. So I thought that was a very interesting foundation, and I think it's something important to note. I could talk at length about our programs, and there is so much good here. But I do think, you know, I have just asked, been asked, or heard asked while I was in the audience here, you know, why would we support Crispin's House, you know, over others? And I'm not here to advocate for others, and I'm not here to advocate for us over others. But I am going to list down some of the things that we've done and how we have connected with the school. I have paid to send your students to Bryant University for a prevention leadership program. I have paid to send your students to Atlanta for another sanctioned leadership program. When we had four busloads of students interested in attending the DEA-sponsored event over at SNU, Crispin's House paid for those buses. We fund Challenge Day. That is our biggest ticket item. It's about $15,000. That is a full-day program that is designed to hit at the roots of substance misuse and bullying. This year, we did pay a little bit more to increase the capacity, because we had had a three-year, a three-year break because of COVID and, and everything else that needed to happen with the Challenge Day organization and whatnot. Long and short, within that, too, so that's your students. Your students are being empowered, then, to go out into your school community to make every day Challenge Day. I don't think all of them do it, but I know a lot of them do. Additionally speaking, that is reaching your staff, because you have staff in that program. We have run suicide prevention programs, youth leadership. Again, staff is there, and your students. That's empowering your students to know how to respond if they identify somebody who is in a mental health crisis. One of my favorite takeaways from that day, actually, because we brought NAMI in. And these aren't inexpensive programs, and I don't want to praise, but I think we never talk about it. And so it's, and we're here about funding. So that's the only reason why I'm mentioning any of this. But one of the biggest takeaways of that day, we had 30 kids, we had a waitlist, we had, I believe it was 12 staff, and then other members of the community, like GPD, fire, clergy, the Y. And one of the students, at the end of the day, said, you know, walking in here, walking into school today, I didn't really think anybody cared about me. into school today, I didn't really think anybody cared about me. And now I know that's not true. And that's unusual. We don't hear that every day, but you know what? That we reached that one person, I'm good. That's, you know, that's a job well done, and I was glad to have the program.
What else do we have here?
Anxious Nation. That was standing room only, that was free for the community. Registrants, 30 of them, had school district emails. Generation Prevention Society, I don't know if anybody who works in the school remembers that, that was a GHS club. That didn't make it through COVID, but they were all about planning monthly social activities that were substance-free. And I helped to deprey those costs for those kids. Like they want, you know, they're like, Ms. McCarthy, we want to go rollerblading. And it was out of a lot of their budget. That's fine, you know? Here, let's make that happen for you. This is something that we can support. Lynn Lyons, that was another big one. That was standing room only in the auditorium, and that was done directly in partnership with the school district. The teachers, actually, Brian, you may remember planning this, I worked closely with them, seen on that. The teachers did PD, and then Crispin's House followed up with the community aspect of it. So, that's the tip of the iceberg. There is an awful lot more that I think you all know. But in the spirit of time and in respect for the hour, I will just close with our warrant article. This has now been 12th year on the ballot. It has been overwhelmingly supported by the voters every year, and, not that I notice, but we actually get a higher percentage every year. I look to see the, you know, the trajectory, because that tells me we're doing a good job. With any concerns about not working in tandem with the Select Board, the Select Board voted unanimously, that's 5-0-0, to recommend our article, and they, I got word that they just did it again last night. So, there is no controversy as far as that goes. So, I would kindly ask for myself, does Crispin's House have the support of the Gulfstone School
We don't respond to public comment.
This isn't public comment.
This isn't public comment.
I'm on the agenda.
She's on the agenda.
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
So, thank you so much. This is really helpful and appreciative for you to come and talk about Crispin's House. I just want to be transparent that my office oversees the contract for diversion.
Oh, you do?
Yes, so I just want to put that out there. I do not personally oversee it. I have nothing to do with invoicing or anything, but a colleague of mine does. We sometimes will discuss contracts and meetings together, but I'm not on, I don't sit in meetings to develop the contract or do anything with it. So, I just want to put that out there. I don't have any personal ties to the funding or dispersment of funds for anything. But I appreciate all the programming that you guys provide. I do think it's rather important, when I spoke earlier, about the direction that we are heading in with our population and what I see. I see a lot of kids who did not have the opportunity that Crispin's House provides, and it's a really, you know, challenging and scary situation for these kids. And so, the more kids that we can reach and support, the better our district is better for this, that it is accessible and so easily accessible to them. So, I appreciate it, and thank you for coming in to talk to me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
I sit before you with the privilege and honor of having been told by multiple kids, Ms. McCarthy, you changed my life. I had a couple, it's scary, you saved my life. You know, I'm glad to have done it, holy cow, you know? It is powerful and important work, and you hit it on the head. Not every community has something like this. And you can see, I mean, at our heart, we're safety net programming, but I've extended it to a springboard, you know, for taking our youth leaders. And all right, you're ready for the next? Let's do it. You know, how can I help you? I do have an open-door policy with our school administration in terms of partnership. Hey, what are you guys seeing? If you ever think that there's something that you need, a program that would be appropriate, let's talk about it. I haven't told anybody no yet. Mr. McBride and I brainstormed a program, it's a silly name, but it's You've Been Caught Being Awesome. And Crispin's House sponsors gift cards, $15 each. And they are given out generally once a week. This is in conjunction with guidance, and it's for those kids for whom there is no traditional measure of success. They're not particularly athletes, maybe they're not theater, maybe they're not A-students. But yeah, maybe they're students whose both parents are incarcerated and were on the news last night, but darn it, they show up to school and they get it done. I had gotten really positive feedback from that, from Frank, in terms of just the success and the power for that, because it is a means with which to say, I see you. We see you. And that is, for somebody who is not walking a more supportive path, it's powerful and it's important. And hopefully, that translates into better engagement. And we know the data. The data suggests absolutely it does lead to more engagement.
Ellen, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
I guess, just a couple of things. I can't say, I have never seen any board or anybody in town not give, not support Crispin's House and all they do for the youth in our community. I don't think it's a matter of whether we support this or not. I think it's, the board has never taken votes on whatever's happening on another committee or board that we have representation at. And I don't know how the board, we mentioned this much earlier in the meeting, wants to, from going forward, if we know about topics coming up, this is an annual article, we may want to, leave that up to the board or the chair annually, take a vote on the things we know might be coming, so that whoever our rep is...
Right.
...and representing us, can say the board has voted, and so vote in support or not support.
Right.
And that we keep that in mind and put that in our files somewhere, so that we do it annually for Crispin's House. And anything else that impacts our schools that might be coming forward for our representative to know how to represent us.
Right. Thanks, Ellen. Nicole, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, it was actually a perfect segue. I was gonna say that every time I learn more about what Crispin's House does, the more, the greater, the more grateful I am that we have it in our community for our students. And I think this is the perfect opportunity for us to have a quick conversation, maybe a quick vote on if it does come up again, sounds like things might be coming up at deliberative session, that maybe our board does want to be in support of this. So, you know, I would love to put that on the table.
Thank you, Nicole. Anyone else?
You want to motion now?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we vote to...
Wait, 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 what are we motioning?
I, can I try it?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just trying to understand where we're going with this.
Yeah, so I was just gonna motion, and tell me if I get it wrong, but if the Budget Committee is to redeliberate or revote on the Crispin's House article, that we request that our Budget Committee members support it.
One second. Any discussion?
I would say, especially in light of if the selectmen have given their, okay, that makes it a little easier for you to do, yes, no?
As a matter of statement, the presenter's correct, the Select Board hadn't voted on anything. So, they were flying blind going into the public hearing. So, that was not helpful for Peter to do that. However, I represent you guys. I've always said that, always upfront. There are going to be conversations, especially from the Budget Committee, that if we open up or if we vote to reconsider, there are going to be additional conversations that occur, which is, we're gonna get into detail about some of the financials of Crispin's House that I don't think we want to get into. But there's also other things, that why are we favoring this one versus other items? And again, I just want to try to keep it black and white, get us out of the debate, that's me. But if we do have a vote to recommend if it maybe come up, which it won't come up, because unless if the number changes at deliberative session, the Budget Committee's not going to look at it again. It's already been voted on. But if it does come up, you know, we can definitely have that as what we want me to do, nothing wrong with that.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? You look like you want to say something.
There's plenty I want to say, because as you know, I spent nine years on the Budget Committee. There were 12 elected members and four appointed members, and I always struggled with those appointed members skewing the vote, and that's what I call it, skewing the vote, because they're not there representing the people, they're there representing their boards, who are, two of them, who are kind of representing their people. The other two, which are the water districts, are just, well, Dick Fletcher, who's been there for, well, so long, I don't think we have history records. And the Grassmire, who has not attended for a while. And I haven't rectified that in my mind yet, to whether or not I could support directing either way that skews it. I would love it not to be part of it, meaning let the Budget Committee, who are elected by the people, do those. But the law is the law, and the law says those four get a chance to opine, so that's where I'm trying to struggle to come up with my reasoning of how I can vote for this. Now, supporting it is not a problem. The problem is, as Jared had articulated, where do we go? We start with one, we have to do them all. We can't just do one, we have to do them all to be consistent.
Right. Go ahead, Ellen.
I'm not sure what "them all" is. It's the only one that's school-related.
Yeah, the rest of them don't have anything to do with it.
Is there something else that's school-related?
Jared?
Well, they're all young children, school-aged children-related. Kids use the pool, kids go there during the summer, that takes them away from doing nefarious activities during the summer. We don't have a pool anymore.
But that's not school district.
It's school-aged children.
But it's not school district.
Well, Crispin's House is a school district either. I mean, as Diane said, there is a separation. You guys work independently, okay? It's closely knit, but it's independent.
Nearly all of their budget funnels right into our students, though. So, that's the difference for me.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's one of the concerns that people are gonna raise, is a nonprofit, what are expenses that we have for 20, the last ones that were sent to me was 2022, or...
You're looking for my budget?
Yeah.
It was in the handout that I had given you. I don't have one for you all, I'm sorry. My son took my car that had all my things.
I was gonna say, I didn't get a handout.
Yeah, no, no, no. I was ready to go with like, great handouts for you guys, so you can see, and they were in my car.
You can email them to us.
I will do that, thank you. So, our operating expense, $125,000 this year is our budget that we adopted in November.
Because what was sent to me from a Budget Committee member, and again, this is what I don't want to get involved with, according to the designation as a nonprofit 501(c)(3), your expenses for 2022 was $84,000. Your revenue was $86,000. That's from the firing, filings that were there, that were sent to me.
Okay.
Of that, it looks like three-quarters of your actual expenses is salaries, according to your actual 501(c)(3).
We are a one-person organization. I run all of our programs. I am the diversion director. I run the diversion. I am at Youth Forum. So, yes, those are program expenses, but yes, I am paid to do my job.
Absolutely, but 60, oh, I'm sorry, 75% of the expenses is going to salaries. They aren't going to children, according to the big work of 501(c)(3), and that's what the Budget Committee members are sending as part of it.
She runs all of those programs, personally is there, working with the children, though, is so...
Yeah, you pull me out. I mean, I'm not providing presents for the children. You pull me out, who does this?
But, so what I'm trying to say is, this is just one thing that we're looking at, and they do a great job for our school-aged children. But what about the library, what they do at school-aged children? How should I vote for that? What about for the students that are going to the rec programs? How should I vote for that? Those are kind of the delineations that I wanted, that I removed ourselves from. I mean, if we're gonna support one, and if we're gonna support all of them, that's fine. But it's one of those things where, why are we gonna support one, why aren't we gonna support the others? I need to be able to have a good answer for that, because these are all school-aged children within our community that do activities.
Isn't Crispin's House its own article?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So, as I said...
It's different. Everything else is town budget.
No, as I said, during the budget...
They're all warrant articles.
They're all warrant articles. So, the $340,000 for the pool, that's a separate warrant article that Rick put on to be voted on.
For the pool.
For the pool. For the capital reserve fund, and then putting $250,000 in the capital reserve fund for the library, that's a separate warrant article. Is that something that we're prepared to support? And if we are, great, I'll support, you know, I will do what this board recommends, but we have to be diligent on what it is that we're throwing our weight behind for exactly what Dan talked about, and what I tried to talk about earlier.
Thanks, Jared. Go ahead, Reta.
I agree that everything is, not absolutely everything, but a lot of the warrant articles are related, or the budget are related to kids and families, et cetera. But I think Crispin's House is much more closely knit, in an alignment with the wellness of the children in the school, so that they can learn. The other thing is, is it's a volunteer organization. You've got one person, that's the majority, but everything else is volunteer, and bringing those groups together to be able to, they can't be working independently. That was the crisis situation back in the early 90s. The fact that you're bringing these people together and keeping them connected is so important to the children in the school in so many ways. So, I think this is beyond just being, you know, it's kids, so it's school-related. This is closely related to the work that we do. And I think there's, we all, we all understand it, we see it in the programs. And in having participated in some of the programs for the parents, it's, these parents are just, the anxious nation, it was just amazing, they were just so hungry for information on how to handle the situation of their families. And, you know, you can't go, you can't just go read a book on it, you're looking for answers or support. So, I see it more than just a light connection. It's important to school.
Thank you, Reta. So, we have a motion that if the warrant article at deliberative is changed, and we have to vote again, that you would be voting in favor. Is that correct? All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. We've had a lot of discussion. Is there any more discussion? And then we can figure out next year with the other stuff. Any more discussion? All right, CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one abstaining, and one. So, we have one opposition and one abstaining. Did I get that right? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Email that stuff to us.
I will, I will.
And maybe, you know, we can have you come more often in the future to update with programs and stuff.
Yeah, I think that's important, so thank you for that.
So that the board knows everything that you guys do and offer.
I mean, we do great work, if I say so myself.
Yes, you do, and we appreciate it. Go ahead, Brian.
I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mrs. McCarthy before she leaves. Incredible partner.
Before she leaves.
As a school, before she leaves, sitting here.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I'll clarify that. She's about to leave.
Where's she going?
Before Diane leaves the meeting tonight, I just want to say thank you. You're a great partner to us. I had the chance to go to Youth Forum last week. I try to get to one or two a year. It's always great to be with the kids and with Diane and the team. There are people that we can call when we need help, and Diane McCarthy is one of them. So, thank you. And I would say, her husband Joe is also in that same camp.
Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Diane, have a good night.
You, too.
All right, guys, staffing.
So, for staffing, everyone should have a copy of the sheet. We have no notifications for your approval... We have no notifications for your approval, we have a retirement of Spia Cody.
Okay, let's do one at a time.
We'll do them one at a time.
Yeah, so we need a motion to accept the retirement of Ms. Cody.
So moved.
All right, Ellen, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Caroline, any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Thank you. Spia's a great teacher, and we will miss her dearly. Nominations for co-curricular athletics, we have high school fall cheer, and we have hiring of a new football coach at Goffstown High School.
All right, so moved to approve the nomination. Thank you, Ellen, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Shane, did you have a question?
I did have, this is really just curiosity, and I don't know if this is a non-public type thing, but the new football coach, background, experience?
Yeah, so new football coach, I have the application packet. So this gentleman is from out of state, but has quite a bit of experience as a coach. I know that the high school is very excited about his expertise and his ability to take over the program. We could certainly talk more in non-public if you'd like, but high school felt a very qualified, experienced individual.
Great, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Thanks, CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
And then there's one more on this sheet.
I know, so sad.
Yep, so Mrs. Gogan, our principal at Bartlett, let me know on Friday. So this is really hot off the press here, but Jerry is going to be retiring, and we'll be sad to see her go. She's done a lot of great work, and I think eight years is what it feels like, so she's been with us a long time, so we wish her all the best.
Yeah, that's very sad. All right, I'll need a motion.
Do we have to?
I know.
You said retirement, this says resignation, is there a technical difference?
There is not, there is not.
Moved to accept the retirement.
All right, thanks, Ellen. Do I have a second? Rheta, any further discussion?
Ed, with mixed emotions to that.
Yes.
I will, she'll appreciate that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. I know, I was on the committee that hired her.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Jerry's got a big heart, she loves Bartlett, and she loves the kids, so we will miss her very much.
Wow, well, thank you. All right, so any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Nope. All right, so we have two non-publics. Which one are we going into first? C or I?
Aye.
Okay, so moved to go into non-public under.
RSA 91-a32i.
Thank you.
All right, so Ellen made a motion, I have a second, by Dan, I'm going to do roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in non-public.
Okay, so we go down below.